Business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, then we will turn it over to Dr. Heron for announcements and superintendents report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We invite you to join the Family Academy Zoom webinar as we present Ignite Curiosity: Fun and Engaging K-5 Thinking Routines at Home on February 21st at 6:00 P.M. During this session, K-5 families will learn how to infuse critical and creative thinking routines at home. Similar to what happens in the classroom, these routines are designed to be open-ended, higher-level thinking opportunities for all students. Visit wjccschools.org now to register for this opportunity. Family Academy, in partnership with the Special Education Department, is hosting a four-part series on special education called Empower and Elevate: Preparing Special Education Students for the Transition to Middle School. Held in March and April, each session will be at James Blair Middle School from 6:30 P.M. to 7:45 P.M. The Family Academy will cover specific topics related to transition to middle school, such as academic behaviors, self-advocacy, healthy living, and social skills. These sessions aim to empower students and parents with practical skills and peer insights for success. Registration is now open through February 29th, and a single registration grants access to all sessions. For details on each session and to register, please visit wjccschools.org. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And moving on to Agenda Item 5.01.
This evening, Ms. Ford will present our proposal for the K-5 Literacy Core Curriculum.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I am very pleased to share information about our community's review of K-5 Literacy Core curricula and the review committee's recommendation. Before describing the process and sharing the committee's recommendation, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the contributions of the more than 280 individuals who chose to participate in the selection process over the 12-week review period. The involvement in this comprehensive review exemplifies our staff and community's commitment to providing a high-quality education for every child. Let's begin by reviewing why we chose to address K-5 Literacy Core Curriculum through the textbook selection and adoption process this year. In March of 2022, and again in March 23, the Virginia General Assembly passed legislation that is referred to as the Virginia Literacy Act. This body of legislation mandates that Virginia public schools take several actions by the start of the 2024-25 school year, including implementing a VDOE-approved Literacy Core curriculum in every elementary school. Core curriculum is the program of instruction and materials all elementary classroom teachers and students use during the daily literacy block. The Virginia Literacy Act requires that every school division ensure the use of an evidence-based literacy curriculum and provide professional development to teachers, reading specialists, and administrators. Every teacher will use an evidence-based literacy curriculum, and every elementary student will receive core literacy instruction that is aligned, designed in alignment with science-based reading research, and provides evidence-based literacy instruction. To ensure that WJCC is prepared to meet the K-5 Literacy Core curriculum requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act, we designed and implemented a comprehensive review and selection process. Through the recommendations of division and school leaders and the use of the Engage with Us process, we formed a 30-member review committee with representation of our school board, division staff, school leaders, elementary staff directly involved in literacy instruction, and parents of elementary students. Each of our nine elementary schools was represented by at least two members of the committee. The review process extended over a 12-week period beginning in late September with the work of the committee and the opportunity for public review and feedback. The committee and public reviewed four VDOE-approved curricula: Benchmark Advanced, Bookworms, CKLA, and Open Court. The review committee met eight times, including an orientation meeting, vendor presentations for the four curricula under consideration, and six meetings to discuss the specific strengths and opportunities of the curricula. The public, including staff not participating on the review committee, parents, and community members had the opportunity to review and provide feedback for the four curricula under consideration for seven weeks using the digital links provided on the WJCC website and interacting with the print materials which were available daily at central office. A curriculum fair was held on October 24th from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. In total, 12 individuals provided feedback for the curriculum materials through the public feedback process. At the December 7th meeting, the review committee considered feedback gathered from the committee and public and identified the two programs considered to be the best instructional options for WJCC schools. During the next five school days, the print materials for the two curricula were available in the nine elementary schools for instructional staff review. After reviewing the materials, staff were asked to identify which curriculum would best serve the needs of WJCC students. 247 elementary staff participated in the school-based review process and provided feedback. At the final meeting, the review committee considered all feedback prior to reaching a final recommendation. Based on the feedback of the review committee, elementary staff, and members of the public, the committee recommends WJCC schools adopt Benchmark Advanced curriculum. Benchmark Advanced is a comprehensive curriculum designed to develop strong foundational skills through systematic explicit instruction, build knowledge, vocabulary, and perspectives through vertically-aligned units, develop comprehension and critical thinking skills by reading engaging, diverse, and complex text sets, and ensure the language and literacy development of our multilingual learners. Though Benchmark Advanced is the preferred curriculum of the majority of the committee, public, and elementary staff who provided feedback, there was support for the other curriculum option. Several important considerations are outlined in this chart. The total cost to purchase Benchmark Advanced will be approximately $1,293,000. This purchase will provide the complete set of teacher and student materials for 247 K-5 classrooms for seven years. The one-time purchase also includes consumable student materials and access to teacher and student digital program resources for the seven-year period. Every classroom kit includes all teacher resources, including daily lesson plans, so classroom teachers can deliver whole-group grade-level instruction and targeted small-group instruction to reinforce or extend skill instruction. In addition to the teacher resources, instructional materials include lesson manipulatives, student texts, consumable student materials, digital access to teacher and student resources, and a portfolio of assessment tools. Benchmark Advanced is a comprehensive curriculum that will provide every WJCC elementary classroom teacher and student the tools they need to engage in evidence-based literacy instruction. I would like to thank Mrs. Julie Hummel for representing the WJCC school board on the review committee. Likewise, I would like to recognize the tremendous work of Dr. Robin Moore. Dr. Moore led the design and implementation of an exemplary comprehensive review process that sought and honored the voice of every participant. In closing, I want to reiterate my gratitude to every member of our community who participated in the K-5 Literacy Core curriculum review and selection process. It was clearly evident throughout the entire process that our administrators, teachers, and parents are deeply committed to their responsibilities to serve the children of our community. Our instructional staff dedicate countless hours in and out of our schools, creating, planning, and learning together to ensure our children have the opportunity to grow and realize their potential. We are confident that fueled by that same commitment, we will successfully implement the new curriculum in every elementary school next year. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have as you prepare to vote on this recommendation at the February 20th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Board members, looking around, are there any questions for Ms. Ford right now? Mr. Hosang?
What did we have before this program?
We have had supplementary materials that we have selected and trained our teachers to use, such as our Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program and other supplementary materials. We have not had a comprehensive core curriculum in our elementary classrooms. So our teachers have access to libraries of rich texts in our reading rooms and decodable readers that they can use with our students in small-group instruction, but it required them to lesson plan around all of those individual materials for how they wanted to use them, either with whole-group grade-level instruction or small-group targeted instruction. And this program is comprehensive in nature. It provides for all of those facets of instruction through one program, and it's one of the VDOE-approved curricula.
Thank you.
What is the, is phonics included in the program?
I'm sorry?
Phonics.
Yes, sir. It has.
How much of an emphasis is there on phonics?
There, the, all of the materials that are, we were able to consider, again, have to be VDOE-approved, so they've gone through a very rigorous VDOE review and approval process. And one of the facets of reading instruction that must be present, as is appropriate at every grade level in the program, is phonics instruction, along with phonemic awareness, fluency vocabulary, and comprehension.
So how do you know this is going to work?
How do we?
How do you know it's going to work? I mean, people, I strongly believe that children need to be able to read by the third grade. If they can't, then where do you go from there? Are you going to pretty much assure that every third grader is going to be literate?
We are certainly, the first step is selecting this high-quality program, and then as we are planning to implement it in our classroom, the next important step is ensuring that our staff are prepared to take these materials and then put them into practice with highly-effective instructional strategies so that our students are engaged in the appropriate instruction, both for their grade level and then through specific skill instruction they may need to address any deficits they have or needs for enrichment based on the assessments that we use on an ongoing basis.
So where is this program being used before, and what are their results?
This is a newly revised program. Again, because of the state's requirement that any program submitted for consideration to the state had to meet a very stringent list of required characteristics. And so this had to show evidence based on the review of the state's committee that it was based in science-based reading research.
Right, but you don't really, do, or do you know how effective this is going to be? I mean, we're looking at a 95% literacy rate by the third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade?
I don't believe we were not provided with information about the evidence of the efficacy of this specific program. Again, it's revised so that it is aligned to the current reading research.
That's very important.
Yes.
We can certainly, Dr. Cavassos, ask the VDOE for some of their reasons for the choice of these materials and ask them to provide some of the background information that you're asking for if they, if it was part of their review process. So we can certainly see if we can get more information for you.
I mean, it just seems to me, Dr. Heron, that if this program has been used in Cincinnati and Cincinnati, you know, increased their literacy rate by, you know, by respectable margin, they say, oh, jeez, this is a really good program. That's something that we should seriously consider. So I was just kind of curious if there was this, even the revised method or, you know, program somewhere, or even the original one. I mean, how effective was it?
And I would hope that was part of the VDOE review because they literally gave, brought it down to three or four programs that we could choose. So I would hope that was part of their initial review that we then choose from, but I certainly will reach out and ask and try to provide that information for you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Riffel?
I also think it's important to highlight this came from the Virginia Literacy Act. That kind of outlines a lot of kind of the concerns with why this legislation even passed. That's why we kind of passed down this from VDOE. It's like, it's how, it's, it works. It's like, to ask legislation to like, basically prove to you how, how literacy rates would work is, it's kind of like, why did they pass it at all, right? So like, the whole idea is that they're trying to move a step further into this process. And so, I don't know, I, I agree with you at some of those points, but asking a committee to give us projections of numbers of literacy rates for unknown students is pretty tough, so.
Well, I realize that. I mean, you know, you, I would like to think, Randy, that they would have some ideas, okay, this is a really effective method, and we really, this is why we want to use it, because whatever shortfalls we may have now, that they'd be corrected. That's, that's all I'm asking. I mean, I know you can't predict the future. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm just curious, where this program has been, you know?
Yeah.
VDOE is a big, a big part of it.
I think we're going to attempt to find some of that because that, that would be interesting to know. So if it's available from VDOE, then we will, I'm sure that will be found for you. So, Mrs. Hunley and then Mr. Hosang.
So I know you mentioned Hegarty, and I know there were some, there was a program where the, I've seen where they have the facial, the mouths, and they pronounce the, the phonetic sounds. Is that going to be supplemental now, or is that woven into this new, or is that going away?
They won't go away because they are effective tools. We will focus on this as a Tier One program because it is so comprehensive in nature and covers all facets of instruction that classroom teachers are responsible for. So we will provide the training for this and implement this in our classroom. Those other strategies, programs, tools that we've been using, we will use them when we see students who may not, because not every student is going to respond to a single program. As we see evidence that students may not be responding the way we would want them to, then we will pull those other supplementary tools in to try as, to try a different approach for those children so that we can accelerate their learning.
Mr. Hosang?
The total cost is, has this already been factored into the budget that we've been reviewing or looking at, or is this something that's in addition to the amounts that we've already been considering?
Yeah, there's actually two sources of funding for this resource with the all-in, one-time funding. There was a portion of money, about 600 and something thousand, don't have the exact number, that was set aside for literacy. So we're going to use that all-in, one-time funding for part of this. And then the rest of the funding is actually in this year's money that we've been able to reallocate to purchase this to start next year. So it's not in next year's budget. It will be paid for with your approval in two weeks. We'll get it in motion. We'll have it here and ready to start next year. And there's been significant training organized already for the summer, so we're ready to, to implement. The actual approach, if I may, may I just one, one comment on, on evidence. The approach that is part, very much part of this resource in science-based reading, we have moved ahead to a great extent with training our teachers in K through two, and we've seen some evidence of increasing scores in PAL scores last year based on this approach. And in fact, we're literally, literally a point of something from being back to pre-pandemic levels in literacy in K2. So the approach embedded in this resource does have some local research behind it. And, and also we've got one or two schools who were out ahead in the implementation of this approach to teaching reading, and we've seen some progress in those particular schools that went beyond some other schools. So locally, we have some evidence, but we can certainly reach back out to the state and say, where did, where did you find the bigger evidence to push these particular resources?
So do you think it, do you think it will eliminate the economic gap?
I think ultimately, literacy is the key, and reading is the key to probably everything. Can I guarantee it'll take away every economic gap in our community? No, absolutely not. But, but I think the gateway to, to success for a child and to, to do well in future life is being able to read, and therefore the emphasis and the investment we put into that becomes incredibly important.
Well, this is encouraging.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Riffel?
I'd like to just ask about the English as a second language. We mentioned it briefly in your presentation. It does no cost for extra personnel or anything like that, so how does it kind of flow into our current model with, with that?
So again, it would, the focus for the core literacy curriculum are the tools and the instruction that our classroom teachers are prepared to deliver for our students at the Tier One level. So that is empowering our teachers to meet the needs of our multilingual learners in the general education classroom. And this program is very specific in every lesson for the guidance it gives teachers to help them differentiate the instruction within each lesson for students who need light support, moderate support, and those multilingual learners who need substantial support. So it gives that guidance to each teacher embedded within the content of that specific lesson. And so by raising our teachers' efficacy for serving our multilingual learners, then that coupled with the services that they receive from our lead teachers should accelerate their learning.
Yeah, I saw that in there. I don't think the documents are all public, so it's one of the, we, we have privy to some things. I just wanted to, I saw it in the overview, and I thought it was something important to mention because I think it's something we addressed in our goals at the Charles field, talking a little bit about like, English as a second language, and how we want everyone to be literate, right? That's kind of the motion there, and you kind of have to move into that space of like, what are, what are we doing in this program, right? For that, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford, if I could ask you just to define for the board and the public Tier One instruction?
Yes. So Tier One instruction is what happens in the classroom for every student. So if you think about our MTSS triangle, where 100% of our students are served by what happens in every classroom for all of our children. And so we want our teachers to be able to be prepared to deliver appropriate grade-level content for all of those students, but we also want them to be prepared to differentiate instruction for those students so that even though they may have different needs from their peers in the classroom, the teacher is prepared to begin serving those needs for those students. And then some of those students go on to become Tier, Tier Two or Tier Three students who receive support either through specialists in the building, special education staff, lead teachers, depending on what their specific needs are.
I have a question or two, if I may, if everyone else has done. Amongst the, the staff that will actually be teaching the material, was this the preferred curriculum?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, can you, can you say, I think it, you said it came down to two for, for your committee, right? What was the main reason for selecting this one?
Again, I believe that as our teachers, our classroom teachers in our buildings, members of our committee looked at the two programs side by side and considered the scope of the support built into each program for the two facets of instruction that occur most often at our classroom level, which is our whole group, grade-level instruction, and then the materials and resources that we have to identify what students' specific needs may be for intervention or extension, and then the materials to support those specific small-group instructional needs.
Okay. So the other one, just, they would have been a little bit more on their own to differentiate?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could add to that, Ms. Ewens, please, that the one we're choosing over a seven-year period actually costs significantly less.
Right.
And there's no annual recurring cost to go into the budget next year that would take something away from what we currently need to do.
Right.
The portfolio of digital tools, both for teachers and students, was far more extensive with this program, the portfolio of assessment tools. Again, it was just far more comprehensive in nature.
Okay. Looking around one more time. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to Item 5.02, Review Invitation for Bid for the Lafitte High School Renovation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is here to present this item for the board this evening. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Snipes is here to present this item for the board this evening.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan. And is being brought forward for your consideration and review of IFB number two zero two four zero zero two five, which is the Lafayette High School Building nine hundred renovation. This project was approved in the FY twenty four CIP in the amount of four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. WJCC Schools has solicited seal competitive bids from qualified, experienced professional contractors with the demonstrated capability and capacity. Of the renovation of the nine hundred building at Lafayette High School. The work under the project uh, consists of renovating the existing annex building. Work also consists of an adjacent courtyard improvements, um, including a new pedestrian paving and fencing. On-site construction will begin on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty four, with substantial completion by Friday, December twentieth, twenty twenty four. And all final work will be completed by Friday, January thirty first, twenty twenty five. An invitation for bid was issued on January tenth of twenty twenty four with the due date of February eighth, twenty twenty four. And as a reminder, this is a placeholder agenda item, so as the time this item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed. The superintendent recommends the board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the February twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Are there any questions about this? Mr. Hoseing?
How will the construction that's going, gonna happen, happen during the first part of the next school year affect the students or instruction that's gonna be taught?
We do not believe it will affect instruction at all. We do similar projects such as the project going on now at War Hill High School with the addition of the gym. Where they separate the the construction. Uh, we don't expect any um, kind of effects on instruction because the nine hundred building is separate from the main building. We won't have any kind of effects on instruction of the students at the nine, in at Lafayette High School.
If I could add to that, Mr. Snipes is referencing the general high school not being impacted because this will be closed off. But there are various programs currently in the nine hundred building. And we are seeking alternative placement of those programs for the six months. We haven't finalized all of that yet, but we do have our learning lab. Our GED program and our newly set up this year restorative program for students that will have to be housed somewhere else next year. We're looking at current buildings. We're looking at all the options possible. It'll be for a six-month period until we can relocate into the newly renovated building.
Have have the new board members seen any graphics or any layouts of what we're talking about? I know the the three of us have, but I don't know if there's, if it's possible to provide that before next meeting?
I have a small printout here. I would love to pass it around after the meeting, but we'll make sure you get.
Yeah, maybe before next time.
The, I think we did a presentation back in September.
Yeah, that would be good to provide.
Presentation.
We can add it to the next agenda for, and I will also send it with my notes uh, this week so that you can see the preliminary, the design of the of the renovation. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
The bid's open right now, right?
Yes, the bid's open. We expect it back on Thursday.
Okay.
The opening process will begin Thursday.
How many people bid? How many people, or how many companies have bid at this point?
At the present time, we are, we do not know. That process will be completed on February the eighth.
I just have a thousand-page document. I was like, we'll tell us, like, I was like, and I couldn't, it's like, it's really hard to expand and and read properly, so. I was like, okay, thank you.
When we have proposed agendas items like this, they're placeholders.
Yeah.
Um, purchasing will not allow us to disclose any information to anyone other than the persons or the committee.
So next time, to be continued.
We promise you.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Oh, you're, you're in the next, you're in the next one too, okay. Um, all right, then we'll move on to the purchase request for the Hornsby Middle School Cooling Tower or Cooling Tower Coil Replacement.
Coil replacement. Um, you're correct. This is a review for the purchase request for the Hornsby Middle School Cooling Tower Coil Replacement. Um, uh, uh, the circulating pump on the controller um, failed due to cold temperatures. Which froze the water in the lower uh, part of the cooling tower coil and the pipe burst. So we need to replace that in order to um, be able to initiate cooling during the, during the summer months. Um, there'll be minimal impact to the school during that time because the work can be done quietly on the outside when you replace these coils. Um, the replacement will be covered under school division insurance and will be part of a, the uh, the contract, annual contract we have. With James City County for, with Warwick Mechanical Annual Contract Number one nine, one three, seven, three, nine. So they're gonna demo remove the old cooling tower. They'll install new matching equipment, um, and then they will start up and make sure we're doing commissioning. The total cost of the project right now is one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And insurance will cover all but ten thousand, eight hundred of it. Uh, the insurance deductible is twenty-five hundred and the upgrades that we've requested, so we can hopefully prevent this from happening in the future. Uh, is an additional eighty-three hundred dollars. Those upgrades will allow our maintenance department to drain those coils. When we think it's gonna be too cold, so we don't have that burst again. Um, the superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the February twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Okay, Mr. Hoseing?
Was there any water damage to the school or buildings?
No, um, cooling towers are usually outside of there, outside of the building. Um, or they're on top of the building when you replace the HVAC equipment. So no, there was no damage inside the building.
No, no water da- damage or anything. I, I guess I'm just going back to the issue we had last year with the mold in the school. I want to make sure that there's, won't be any issues with this school and with this repair and everything.
Right, the issues under air quality at previous school was because of dehumidification. Um, and it was nothing dealing with the cooling tower. Uh, cooling tower is um, is outside, so you kind of take the stuff out, you put the coils in, so no.
All right, anyone else for Mr. Snipes? All right, I think that was it. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. And we will move on to our favorite subject, um, item six point zero one, fiscal year twenty twenty five operating budget discussion. And I think Mrs. Hunley has a statement to read.
Um, I have a disclosure statement. As a member of the School Board of the Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest. In the fiscal year twenty five school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this evening, want to provide some additional information regarding the budget. We made a preliminary presentation that amounted to a certain amount of money. We've been working in many different areas trying to reduce that, the amount that we would ask of our localities for funding. Realizing that we won't probably get all of the funding that we're asking for because it's pretty significant. So this evening, we're gonna talk mainly about healthcare and 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 talk about some of our our challenges there. And then some other budget reductions that we've worked through over the last couple of weeks. Ms. Ew and our Chief Financial Officer will start and Mr. Baker, our Senior Director for Human Resources, will, will be talking about the the benefits and insurance piece.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. At the budget workshops last month, we shared with you state revenue information based on the governor's budget. As well as expenditure increases that were being considered for the superintendent's proposed budget. This evening, we will share updates regarding proposed instructional and support scale adjustments, as well as updated information regarding health insurance. As a reminder, this is a summary of the revenue and expenditure information that was discussed during last month's budget workshops. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately one hundred twelve thousand to the expenditure adjustments presented. Which ranged in amount from eight point five million to ten point nine million, depending on the salary increase that is provided and the health insurance increase. The total shortfall amounts to approximately eight point four million to ten point eight million, which would become a request to our funding partners. Part of the additional expenditures amount of two point four million included proposed adjustments to the support and teacher salary scales, which we will discuss further this evening. Before outlining recommended expenditure adjustments, we wanted to share the outcome of our staff survey. We asked all staff members to select their top budget priority. Of those who responded, just under eighty percent identified salary increase for all staff as their top budget priority. Mr. Baker will now provide additional details regarding compensation and health insurance.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, and Members of the Board. While we have closed the gap for starting salaries, we continue to lag behind the region in milestone years. This slide shows how we compare in different milestone years on the bachelor scale. And that we are falling further behind the regional average, especially at the twenty-five-year mark, where we are five point four four percent below the average. This slide shows how we compare in different milestone years on the master scale. And that we are falling further behind the regional average, especially at the twenty-year mark, where we are seven point two nine below the average. And at the twenty-five-year mark, where we are six point eight three percent below the average. While the majority of our new hires are in the first five years of service and experience, we must continue to look at our instructional pay scales with respect to experience between the years ten and twenty-five. As I've just shared, we are struggling to keep pace with our regional competitors on this front. Moreover, fifty percent of the teachers leaving WJCC were in the ten to twenty-five years of experience range. While we do not always know the exact rationale for departure, we do know that salary often has an impact. In order to address competitiveness and compression in our teacher scale, an additional teacher scale adjustment, along with any potential percentage raise. Could be given and should be considered. This would help us close the gap on these milestone years and get closer to the regional average. These adjustment recommendations are part of a multi-year phase-in plan.
When we discussed teacher scale adjustments during the budget workshops, we were originally looking at adjustments on steps ten through sixteen of one thousand dollars. Step seventeen through twenty-four of fifteen hundred dollars and step twenty-five and above of two thousand dollars at a cost of one point one million. The multi-year plan would have a cost of four hundred eighty-two thousand in the first year, which would mean a budget adjustment of six hundred thirty-seven thousand. We do intend to bring forward adjustments in subsequent years to continue to make improvements and be more competitive.
In looking at our entry-level position, it is essential that we benchmark our wages compared to our primary competitors. On this slide, we show the minimum of our grade four, which includes our custodians, cafeteria workers, and bus aides. To increase grade four by a one dollar an hour market adjustment would take our starting rate from thirteen fifty an hour to fourteen fifty an hour. And adding a three percent raise would bring our current staff at a grade four up to a minimum of fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents an hour. The cost of this proposal is two hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars annually for salary and benefits. And for the sake of comparison, we included the starting scale information for James City County and the College of Blamen Mary. The information for the other organizations is current and does not reflect any potential increase to their starting wage. On this slide, we show the minimum of our grade eight, which includes our bus drivers. The other hourly comparisons are for CDL bus driver positions. Again, for comparisons, we included the starting rate of WADA. To increase bus drivers in a grade eight by a one dollar an hour market adjustment would bring our new minimum to eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents an hour. An additional raise of three percent would bring the current staff at the minimum to eighteen dollars and ninety-one cents an hour. And cost one hundred and forty-two thousand and seventy dollars annually for salary and benefits. To summarize the previous two slides and looking to enhance hourly rates for key members of our support staff scale. We could provide the following possible adjustment ranges. If we provide one dollar adjustments to grade four and grade eight on our support scale, it would cost four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. For salary and benefits when combined with a three percent proposed increase.
When we discussed the support scale adjustments during the budget workshops, we were originally looking at adjustments on grades four through eight. Of an average one dollar per hour adjustment. The multi-year plan would have a cost of four hundred forty-two thousand in year one to address custodians, cafeteria workers, bus aides, and bus drivers. Which would mean a budget adjustment of four hundred sixty-six thousand. These positions were selected for year one of our multi-year plan because they are our lowest-paid employees and we have significant challenges in filling our bus driver vacancies.
Could stop just for a a moment before we get into health insurance and just maybe get us for the board's sense of 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 your response to this. It's very different from what we first presented. It, uh, we, after discussion with the board, there was a desire to look at what it would look like over several years. This being the first year of increasing in these two areas, both the teacher compensation at various years and also these support grades. Have we gone too far? Do we need to go more? Where, where should we be from your perspective?
Mrs. Donard, do you?
Yes, well, so thank you for um, for looking at it, at a, tearing it across a few years. And we talked about it's why we love to give it all at once, just given budget constraints, if you can do a little bit at a time. But to give people a sense of what the plan is, that, uh, so that the teachers and faculty and staff know that we are. Committed to um, getting everybody to a place where it's reflective of what they are contributing. I do have a question around the grade four. And I know there's talk about just a minimum wage of fifteen dollars and we're six cents short of that. Is there a reason why we wouldn't just go to a full fifteen?
I think for us, as we mentioned, it is a multi-year plan, so we would, we would get there uh, in plenty of time.
I mean, if a, if a law is passed, we would have to go to fifteen and would want to go to fifteen, obviously, if if a law is passed for next year.
I'm just curious, does that six cents make a difference?
We, we can do it.
It, it, just as a question, it just, it would be like if you could really just go to the fifteen dollars. Because sometimes you feel like when it's like fourteen dollars and ninety-six or ninety-four cents, it's kind of, can feel like you're making it cheaper than it needs to be or cheapens it. If you could just go to the full fifteen, if that six cents doesn't make a difference. Or that we could, I should say, that we can support it with our budget. Uh, because I would imagine if we went to, right, if minimum wage goes to fifteen dollars. Then the increase doesn't really feel like much of an increase, at least we're ahead of it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Riffle, you look like you have a question?
I would say the minimum wage bill passed the House and Senate, so it it is at this point moving forward to fifteen by twenty twenty-six. So with the governor to make action, you know, before the session ends, so.
Um, anybody else have a question at this juncture before we move on?
Could you repeat the questions of the board? I think you're asking for.
Just your, your reflections on on the changes that we've made. We've had one reflection on this particular one, which is, which is great. It makes sense. Uh, the teacher one, we, we took a much smaller amount for next year than what we had anticipated. Uh, and that will be a multi-year adding to the teacher scale at certain points every year to get us even close to our neighboring divisions. And just your reflection on what you, if you feel we've gone to the right amount there as well, looking at our proposal. Maybe we could, maybe go back to that slide and have the board just look at that again to get your reflection on it before we move into actually proposing a budget.
So I have a question then. Um, I, I think, I think this, it was around this slide that it was mentioned this would get us closer to the regional average. Is that correct? What would take us above it or, and what is, what is the, what is the timeline to? I, I assume, you know, what's the goal and what's the timeline to reach the goal? I assume the goal would be above average.
We will take many years to reach some other pay skills at these steps in the scale. So this is, this is minimal in terms of getting our teachers to the, the average.
But this is year one of how many years?
It would have to be at least five or six years. And it would mean a different amount every year, looking to see what others have done as well. So it, it's a, it's a minimal step. It's not enough and it's minimal.
Mr. Riffle?
It's, this is without state assistance, I'm assuming as well, like just kind of based off of the proposed budget we have from the governor. Um, right, there's no like what ifs scenarios, like this is all based off local putting up the money at this point.
That's correct. That's the only thing that we know right now that's final. It's the only thing we can build a budget on. Uh, we would hope there'll be more money available, but it, you can't sort of build a budget on, on hope.
Sure. I think that was more of a clarification for the public, you know. I think that was more of a clarification for the public, you know, when we, when we talk about this, we're talking about it with our own understanding of what we have available to us, right, so.
Yes, sir.
There's always rumors out there, but thank you.
Mr. Hosang?
In relation to the support scale, you're going from grades four through eight to grades four and eight. What are the number of employees we're talking about in each of those? Are we getting the majority of employees? Are we getting a very small number of employees?
It's, uh, like, the grade four is about a hundred and thirty employees and the grade eight is about a hundred and twenty employees.
So what would be then five, six, and seven?
Um, we'd have to get there for you, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Hosang, what we've done is we've, we've taken some out of consideration for this year and, and targeted where we are having difficulty hiring people the most. The most, um, urgent positions to make a, to make a change in the minimum wage. And that, of course, flows through our scales. Um, so again, we've, we presented what we felt was our real need. And now we're actually pulling back from that to make it possible. And really need the board's reflection on it. If the board says tonight, we need to do it all, and we need to go back to the original figure, then we will. And we'll ask for more money, but I really want your input to know where you are as we, as we move into this. It, it, these are difficult decisions because we need it all.
Again, and then four and eight, you said are the critical needs or the more critical needs for the school system as opposed to five, six, and seven?
That's correct. Dr. Kehler, you maybe have more information?
Well, I want to be, I want to be really careful because those in grades six and seven are critical to the organization. So those are, those are...
Critical needs.
Right, so in, in looking at grade four, it is our lowest-paid employee, generally custodians, cafeteria, bus aides. So we, we started with that grade because they were the furthest from opportunity relative to hourly wage. We've had recurring conversations around bus drivers and the need to continue to hire bus drivers. And we look competitively across our region, we're not as competitive as we need to be there. So that's why we went with grade eight. I think ideally we'd be able to do grades four through eight. Anecdotally, there is, there is a singleton on grade five, so that isn't necessarily, there's, there's a, a person that holds that role. So the, the balance of staff in six and seven would hopefully see a three percent increase if, if the board moves that forward and our funding partners are able to get there as well. And these other two grades would see the three percent plus the targeted adjustments.
Mrs. Hunley, did you have a question?
So what's appealing to me about the teacher pay scale compensation? It does help with retention. And I'm not really sure which school division jumped on that last year. And the paper said, you know, these teachers were getting this percent raise. But when you really looked at it, they really did target certain years. And it really helped keep their people from jumping to someone else's scale. So I do see that. I would also hope that we would keep the data on this, that if we go with this and we don't get movement in those years, that kind of tells us that that was something that helped with retention. But I do think that's very appealing for retention purposes.
That was Hampton City Schools last year.
That was them. Okay, I knew it was one. I didn't want to call out the wrong one.
And I think theirs was a thousand at certain points in the scale.
And these, these numbers are reflected in the, the large ask that's on the first slide? If, you know, for additional funds needed, that's already included in that?
Yes, let, let's go back to the slide that you're referencing, so we're, make sure we're answering correctly.
This one?
So this, this is from last time and, and includes the higher ask and everything?
Correct.
If you move to slides further along, we, we've started to cut into that ask by adding more at certain points in the scale, only giving the one dollar additional pay to some groups. Several other things we're going to see tonight that's bringing down this overall ask that we talked about last time. If we wanted to do everything the way we should do it, we would do all of this.
I see. Okay. Ready to move on? Okay. Did you have a question?
I was just gonna add to, I think I was trying to ask, answer Dr. Herring's question if I could.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think it was with Ms. Donner when she suggested the fifteen. I think it's a good move to move towards for grade four. Um, it's always kind of weird to tell an employee, like, what's the difference, why six cents, you know? Like, I've been there before, like, hiring people in kitchens and stuff. Um, so it's just easier to kind of pass it along if, if our neighbors, you know, in Newport News and, and William Mary are already at that threshold, right? So, um, that's just my two cents and how I'd like to see it moved, um.
Is that two cents or six cents?
Six cents.
So over a three-year period, you'll...
To your plan.
I, I think we've got to remember, if I, if I may, Madam Chair again, we can do all of this, but if everyone else gives three percent, we have gained very little.
Right.
Very, very little, because we, this does not take into consideration what other school divisions in our region will do.
Mrs. Donner?
So maybe I was, so this is in lieu of a three percent for everyone else, or this is in addition to?
All of these are in addition, the extra points on the scale, the extra dollar and six cents per hour. Um, that's, they get three percent plus this.
Okay. Ms. Chen?
Oh, just to, um, add to, Dr. Herring, you're asking for a general sense from us. Um, I'll just add my observations and sort of where I'm at. Um, I, I also will say I agree with, um, Mr. Riffle and Ms. Donner about the fifteen dollars. Um, and I do like seeing the graphics here for the grade four and also the grade eight bus drivers. It looks like with the increase of a dollar and then the three percent that it puts us in, um, compared to, at least what we know for now, compared to the other, uh, regions. Um, we are near the top three or in the top three. Um, so that, that decision seems like a, a smart one. Um, and if at all possible, you know, we want to try to increase those. But, um, I do have concerns about, um, the teacher pay scale compensation considerations. I understand that, um, this is part of a multi-year plan. Um, however, given the previous two slides where it has the bachelors and the masters, I'm just looking at how we are, you know, we're fifth out of sixth, we're fifth out of sixth, we're five point four percent below average, four point five eight percent below average. And then for our, our teachers who have gotten a master's degree, meaning they've put in, you know, additional time and money, um, to get that additional, you know, um, education, we're even further behind in percentages. Um, and assuming that other localities are going to also give an increase, at least as much as we are, um, it seems concerning to me that, um, we're possibly wanting to, I guess I, I want to push us toward that original teacher pay scale adjustment as much as possible, um, because that seems to make the most sense, um.
Mr. Riffle?
This is my last two cents, I swear. Um, I think it's important to, when we talk about this adjustment, like, the amount of money we receive from, like, if you looked at original first slide where it says, like, how much we get from the governor's proposal, it's going to be very different compared to Newport News and Hampton, who are like the top of the list when it comes to this average and the charts we're, we're proposing here. Uh, that's, that's, that's something that public, it's really, it's really hard to kind of explain to people how that works and, and the formulation of that. Uh, I just wanted to, I think it's maybe, it might be good to just hear, like, how that kind of formulates out, um, and why we're, or like a, like a two-minute blurb about it, because that's always like the thing we have to kind of get over when we're explaining this stuff and talking to funding partners, right? It's like, it is a difficult kind of jump because of the way it's written, how it, how it kind of hits us harder than it hits other places in the peninsula, right, so.
If there's any other input on this as to where you have a level of comfort and what we need to do to be competitive, um, this, this is the opportunity now because of the next, uh, meeting. So we'll be presenting a budget for your consideration.
How, how reasonable, or how, what's your thought that you're going to be able to get the upper end of this?
It, it's, it's hard to say. I think it's one piece of a larger puzzle with a three percent raise and other, you know, renewals of contracts where this pushes our overall ask up considerably from the county and city, our funding partners. Um, we don't know what we were getting from the General Assembly, which I believe will be more than the governor's budget. So it's, it's going to increase that overall ask, but it may be, it may well be worth it.
Is it really reasonable to be fighting or competing against, uh, an entity that has an LCI so much better than ours? And they can afford to pay, or apparently be able to pay twenty bucks? I mean, it's beyond me how the city of Hamden can pay the twenty and we're paying fifteen. I mean, that must be all federal money or state money, it's not local money.
Yeah, I think other...
We're in the other hands, we're a different, we're a different competitor.
Other divisions, depending on their LCI, get a lot more money from the state. So even if we, that number goes up for us, it goes up that much more for everyone else. So this comes down to the support of our community of public education and their desire to keep teachers in our schools.
Well, I, and I think that, that's probably in my mind, the better objective than to try and chase an LCI in a different city, is just to make our teachers that much more, um, paid, a better paid. I mean, it's, it's a local thing, because we can't compete against those big dollars. I mean, we're never going to get to, well, we may, we may well, but it's like mixing apples and oranges.
Right, but, so to do that, as a school division, we need to ask for all of this and, and move forward with a bigger ask if we're going to get close to an average salary at these levels of the pay scale. So we're bringing this forward to be, it's a very conservative approach, um, which we generally do have because we're aware of the funding that might be available. But this, this is, this is really, really important to keep our teachers.
So in your estimation, this is rock bottom?
I'm sorry?
In your estimation, this is rock bottom?
I, I think the adjustments that we're proposing tonight are very, very minimal. I think the proposal we originally had at one point one million, it's, it's going to make us more competitive over a lesser number of years. We, we will, we will be competitive sooner, but it, it asks the locality for more money. And we've got to have a level of comfort in doing that, um, probably because it's the right thing to do.
So I, I think that I'm sort of feeling a sense, even though there's still, I think there's still a lot of questions, but I'm feeling a sense that maybe we want to push towards the, the larger numbers? Is that what, is that what people are feeling in the room? The original versus revised? I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, so I think when I originally heard that we would do it gradually over time, in, in my mind, I had a three, I had the number of three years in my mind. And so to hear that it's a five or six-year trajectory, that sounds like you'll never get there, uh, if you're moving at that pace. And, and so I, I think you have to ask for what, right, we always talk about, we do a budget of need. Like, you need to come with a budget of need, which is the one point one or something closer to it. Um, if you have to go gradual, I still think it has to be like, what is the number where it takes you three years to get there instead of five or six, because that just is too long.
I'm seeing some nodding. Mr. Riffle?
I'm, I'm in agreement. I think this is, this is foundational. This is, this is not like, we're barely debating something here. This is, you're already talking about this two years ago, right? Like, this is how that kind of goes. Like, if you're not wanting to play this game, you're basically asking teachers to leave, like, following this spring, right? That's how it is, and that's just how, it, that's the reality we're facing as a board, right?
If I may, address Mrs. Donner's question, even at the higher number, it's going to take several, several years to do it. This is not a, a one-year make everything right. If we go with the lower number, it'll take multiple years to make us competitive at those particular steps on the scale.
Mr. Hosang?
And just for clarification, when you're talking about the plus one thousand or the plus five hundred, that is strictly for this year?
That's for this year into the, in next year's budget. We would have to come back every year.
And ask for an additional...
Absolutely.
Thousand dollars or five hundred, whatever that case may be.
Correct, so you're talking over a million dollars per year for the next several years if we go to the higher ask to adjust the pay scale to where it needs to be.
We could adjust it next year, up or down, depending on what, what may happen and what our funding partners may be, feel generous to give us.
Right, and so, you know, it's always a, a catch-22. Um, as Mrs. Donner rightly said, do we ask for what we really need? Or do we ask for what we think's actually possible? And, and there's somewhere in the middle that makes some sense.
Mrs. Hunley?
It's just very hard, from what I hear from teachers, is when, you know, we've done well with the beginning salaries and when you have a new person that comes in making that amount and you've been here ten years and you're closer to them, then it's really hard. And we don't want, I mean, we don't want a workforce where we just have all new people and a few in the middle. I mean, we're going to lose all our veteran knowledge and a little ahead of time, so. And I understand why we did what we did to get new people, but now you have other people looking and going, wow.
So the good news is we're, we're considering something, so which is really good, because we haven't done it before. The big question really that we need to know, leaving the room tonight, is to what extent should we, should we move this along in our budget for next year?
So I, again, I think, can we go, what do you, Mrs. Hunley, what do you think? I'll just go briefly around the room, if, what's your recommendation?
Um, the original.
Mr. Hosang, what are your thoughts?
I'm torn, um, just because, I mean, I'm going to say that, obviously, teachers need greater than what we're doing in our original budget. But we also have a responsibility to our county, our constituents, and the city, um, to spend the money wisely and not to, um, push forward an agenda or funding that we know we don't have. Um, I, I mean, I'm concerned that if we go with the, I mean, I'll probably go with the original amount just, just because the teachers deserve it. Um, but my concern is that we're going to, um, potentially not get it and potentially either put us in further hole of, um, uh, with our funding partners.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riffle?
I'm, I'm, I'm for the original, I think. This is, you, you could, you could think that, I mean, I jokingly say the generous assembly, but this is something they're talking about, you know, actively right now. And it's because of what's been written already, like, the, the legacy budget wasn't enough, right? It, it clearly shows prior is not there, um, with the way it said it should have been. And, and that's, that's something we'll, we'll have to grapple with, but I, so I believe in our funding partners. So I guess what I'm saying is like, they'll kind of do their part in, um, I think, James City County and then the city um, with their current developments. This, this will make more sense, um, just overall, like, if you're trying to, it's, it's just a grand scheme, right? It makes sense, um, so.
Ms. Chen, I think you already said...
I did, yes, so I, I'd like to see us push for the original.
Dr. Kravazovs?
Um, I would say that, um, teacher pay obviously is an important, very important topic. If we go with the original, then I'm going to have to find money somewhere else. We can't go in a budget, I mean, we can't go in a deficit, and they may not give us the money. I think it's admirable that we can go with the original, but we have to find some way to, to balance this out somewhere.
Yeah, I believe so. What will happen if we were to ask for a certain amount and, and at a certain point in time, we know what we're getting compared to what we asked for, that's where we make some of the hard decisions. And we, we start with a higher amount and we have to reduce it because we don't actually get the money. So there is a process in place where we are forced back to the table to reduce what we intend to do. And that may be percentage raises, it may be pay scale adjustments. We will have a, we will have to understand what will change should we not get all of the money. And so that will be on us. And so that will be on us to redo as a board and, and superintendent when we get the, the actual amount that's possible.
Right, right, as long as it's understood, and I think, I think we need to, we're gonna pay this, then we need to find the money somewhere else.
Right.
And Mrs. Donner?
Yeah, I think we, um, and I appreciate the comments around with our fund, excuse me, our funding partners. Um, I think like, again, I've been through one budget cycle. We went in with a budget that we knew was the right budget ask, um, and knew that, right, there's that negotiation that had to happen. I think I feel comfortable going in with what we believe is a budget of need and what really supports us being the division, I think, to the conversation we were having earlier about the learning loss of our children with reading and math and needing to be able to support that. You need to have experienced teachers in the classroom to be able to support that and to, and to provide support to our new teachers, that they're, they've got those mentors that support them so that they're not floundering in those first few years. And so I think making the, explaining the value to our funding partners as to why we need to make the investments in this place. Um, I think we go forward with the original and make the case for what this will mean for our children and for their educational achievement.
And I, I agree. I think that we've known for a long time that the, the compression in the, sort of in the middle is a problem and, and it's one, it is wonderful to recruit brand new teachers and we certainly want as many as we can, but it's, it, if you're bleeding as many experienced ones, um, or maybe, you know, when you lose one experienced teacher, that's, that's a greater loss than, than you're gaining with even a brand new teacher, so.
I'd like one more thing, actually. I think this is also not just about teachers, about educators, right? It's like, everybody a part of this. It's not just teachers, it's about, you know, people from bus drivers, and it's, it's how the whole system works, right? And that's, that's, it's, it's easy to say teachers, like, and that's a great word, but this is about educators, right? So when we think about this, we're thinking about the full holistic system and not just who is teaching our students, like, who is getting them to school, who's providing them a meal, right? Who is cleaning up after them? And so I think, you know, when we speak about these things, people, I think, as Dr. Picasso's or has people have their opinions and the things we're saying, like, we're weighing, this is a pretty big, big thing they've asked for, right? So, I mean, it's, I think we've talked about this, I, I like to reflect in our retreat, because I think it's something people shared a lot about, like, their thoughts and how this stuff works and, um, and this is a place where, like, if you're not thinking about that stuff, like, it's maybe, you know, time to move away from, like, being a part of this thing, right? That's, that's what Superintendent said to us. It's like, if we care about this so much, it's like, you have to think about it, like, as, as a weighty topic, and like, this is, this is people's livelihoods. It's how the, our tunes are fulfilling their, their goals in education, right? So it's a lot more than just money, you know, throwing at people to hopefully get them to stay, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Not sure who we're passing it off to next?
It's me, I believe. Uh, we've received our renewal information from our carrier, the Local Choice, and they've provided us the following information. Our Anthem Plan renewal is at a nine percent rate increase. Our Centerra Plan renewal is a three point four percent rate increase. And the rate scenario is on the next slide will be based on a seventy thirty share of the increase based on the Centerra Plan, with WJCC picking up seventy percent of the increase and the employee picking up thirty percent of the increase. And we have over thirteen hundred employees participating in our health plans. On this slide are a couple of examples of what the potential three percent raise would look like alongside a proposed annual increase in healthcare cost and our Centerra HMO plan, as well as our Key Advantage two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan with a seventy thirty split based on the Centerra premium increase. We've included two teacher examples, one at the beginning of the pay scale and one at the midpoint of the pay scale. We have also included two examples for support grade six employees, one at the beginning of the scale and one at the midpoint of the scale, and those are all listed there across the bottom. This is a best case and a worst case scenario based on healthcare choice. On the far left of this slide, the first example is a step zero teacher, and the range could be from a positive of one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollar increase if that is an employee only coverage with Centerra represented by the dark blue line above the red zero line. So there at the left-hand side, at the top on the left, that's, for me, that's dark blue. Uh, and it goes potentially to a negative one thousand one hundred and one dollar decrease if they've chosen the Anthem two hundred and fifty dollar family plan coverage as represented by that light blue line there at the bottom. And so the others are the same examples for the mid-year teacher support employee at the minimum and support employee, uh, at the midpoint.
So that is the amount that the employees would have to pay in increase?
This would be for the potential net increase, including their three percent hour, three percent raise, including with the health and share, health insurance increase, the choice they made. So on the left-hand side there is, is a beginning teacher who, uh, has chosen the Centerra Plan individual coverage. If they get a three percent raise and they also are in the Centerra employee only coverage, their net increase next year annually is gonna be the, the one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. But if they're taking the, that same person, if they happen by choice to have the Anthem Key Advantage Family Plan, that amount's gonna go up. Even with three, three percent raise, their net increase next year is actually gonna be a negative of the, uh, uh, there on the, on the scale.
And Mr. Hosang, that yes, that is taking thirty percent of the increase, not of the full plan, but thirty percent of the increase to the plan this year. And the school division's still taking seventy percent of that increase. That's the impact from most expensive to least expensive plan.
Could you say those lines again, the colors? What, what are they? Sorry.
Sure, uh, so on the far left side is, is a step zero teacher and the range being a positive one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars increase if that's employee only with a Centerra Plan. That, so then the green line going to the red is zero, and then potentially a negative uh, line there is for one thousand one hundred and one dollars if it's, if they're taking the Key Advantage two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan, family plan. The family plan costs a lot more.
So that employee would be losing money even though they receive a three percent increase?
Their net, for the year.
Yes, sir.
And how, I'm sorry, how many people do we have in that potential position?
Mr. Baker, I think that's the numbers on the two fifty taking the family plan right now. It's hard to say whether they're on step zero or mid, maybe take the mid would be more appropriate.
For right now, like, we have, like, one thousand one hundred and fifty employees. They're taking the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible and the five hundred dollar deductible plan. And we only currently have a hundred and sixteen employees taking the Centerra HMO plan. This is the first year we've offered the HMO plan. Uh, so we, we have fewer employees currently in it.
So this is why we asked the question. Is it important to have a, a reason salary? Or should we put money into the employer responsibility for the increase in, in healthcare? What, if, if you take anything away from this slide at all, what you gain or lose in terms, you get a three percent raise, what you gain or lose in your paycheck at the end of the month next year depends on the healthcare plan that you choose. And we have many options along those green lines. We have the two fifty deductible, the five hundred deductible, the-
If you're adding your, just your, yourself, or if you're adding one person, adding a child, adding you know, multiple children, adding, uh, the entire family, it would, it'll cost more.
Adding dental, adding, there's, there's lots of choices within that.
And going from the, to the HMO plan or-
Yeah. Um, the good news is that we do have a new plan that almost mirrors our most expensive plan, that a, a, a number of people are trying out this year and have found it to be very good. And one of the key things we've been out of this, which I think Mr. Baker's going to address, we want to really provide a lot of information and education to our employees about the choice that can be made that will still leave people really well covered with a good insurance plan. Mr. Baker?
Sure, thanks. The next slide.
So this table shows a comparison of current year employee rates for health insurance as compared to estimated rates for next year. The estimated rates are based on the Centerra Health Plan, which has an increased cost of three point four percent, and that increase is then shared with employees on a seventy percent WJCC, thirty percent employee split. As an example, someone currently on the Key Advantage five hundred comprehensive plan with family coverage pays five hundred seventy dollars per month. If the employee chooses to stay on the same plan next year, the estimated monthly cost is seven hundred twenty-five dollars per month. Or the employee could choose to move to the Centerra Plan and potentially decrease their monthly cost by one hundred dollars and pay an estimated four hundred sixty-nine dollars per month next year.
To help our employees better understand the various healthcare plan options and to continue to give our employees choice in their healthcare, we intend to offer a division-wide health fair with additional educational opportunities. We will ensure that all employees have the opportunity to participate so they can select the best plan that suits their healthcare needs.
We don't wanna hold for a moment. You wanna do the final slides on healthcare first?
I can.
Yeah, absolutely. Then I wanna just pause for a moment and just get your reflections on, on some of the information that we've shared.
So in previous budget discussions, our healthcare cost scenarios were based on an estimated increase of ten percent across all plans, which was an estimated total increase of two point six million. And the budget impact of that, um, on a seventy thirty split was a budget increase of one point eight million. As Mr. Baker previously shared, our Anthem Plan is expected to increase by nine percent and the Centerra Plan by three point four percent. In past years, we have based the employer rates for health insurance on our Key Advantage five hundred plan. And this year, we are proposing to base the division's rate on the Centerra Plan. The staff survey indicated the majority of employees would prioritize a salary increase over increased coverage of healthcare costs. In order to do this, we are recommending that the division's contribution to healthcare costs be based on the increase to the Centerra Plan. By doing this, the impact to the budget is reduced from one point eight million to five hundred sixty-two thousand or a budget adjustment of one point two million.
Mrs. Donner?
Could you just repeat what that means again? I don't quite understand it.
The, about the rates?
Yeah, like what you just said about basing it on the increase or of the Centerra Plan.
So as an example, if the Key Advantage five hundred plan, let's say, costs a thousand dollars a month, nine point nine percent increase would be ninety dollars. So seventy percent of that is sixty-three dollars. So our increased cost would go up by sixty-three dollars. But if that increase is three point four percent or thirty-four dollars, seventy percent of thirty-four dollars is twenty-four dollars, so the division's monthly cost would go up by twenty-four dollars. So if we base the increase on the Centerra Plan, then the amount the division is gonna fund is gonna be less because the increase is only three point four percent.
And part of the reason for not creating the, just an average, is if we use an average, then the increase to this Centerra Plan, we would be putting part, more of the increase on their, on those people when their plan did not go up that much. Dr. Kiefer, if you wanna jump in, feel free, you know, you've been-
I agree, I think, I think the, the ability for the school division to, to reduce the budget ask by one point two million is related to staff members' choice on healthcare. So if a staff member, we, we are providing the choice, we are saying that you have a choice to stay at the two fifty or five hundred mark or go to Centerra, your premiums will be more with Anthem with the two fifty and the five hundred plan than those premiums are with Centerra, whereby accruing a savings of one point two million. So the, the employee is going to, if he or she chooses the Anthem two fifty or five hundred, are, are going to be paying more of a premium.
Can I just make a clarification if I under, if I'm, I'm, if I'm understanding the math? So, and I forgot the number, but let's say the seventy, that example you gave, you said the seventy percent. But let's just say it was the thirty-four dollars. So what are you saying that we will give every employee an increase of thirty-four dollars to your plan? And so if you take the Centerra Plan, then great, but if you took, and that you would have gotten your seventy percent coverage, but if you took the two fifty or the five hundred plan, you might actually be paying instead of the thirty percent, forty percent or fifty percent, because we're basically giving you a dollar amount of what we're, of the part of the increase we're willing to, to shoulder.
I, I think that's a fair explanation, going back to the slide that Ms. Ewing showed in terms of what the projected rates would look like. We, we, we pay, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Renee, as we shared, I think in the last presentation, we pay a standard amount for employees, employee plus and then family.
So currently for like employee only, regardless of which plan, if it's the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan, the five hundred dollar deductible plan or the HMO, the school division currently pays seven hundred twenty-four dollars. And so if an employee says, well, I wanna take the more expensive two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan, they're the ones made that choice and they're paying more for it.
So we have a flat amount that we're gonna give you. You can pick what you want and figure out in the more expensive plan you pick, then you will shoulder that, but like, everyone's kinda getting that same flat amount of the contribution.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But, okay, this is just for clarity. So if you take Centerra, does Cent, okay, so I think this is where the health fair's gonna come in. If you take Centerra, does that include I envision, envision, and it does?
Yes, ma'am.
So what are you losing? I mean, what are, so why wouldn't you take?
Many people have, it's, it's an HMO.
Okay.
So it's, it's a little bit more of a controlled cost.
So you mean out of pocket?
It could be.
So that's the kicker. I mean, that could be the thing, so.
Part of the education, I think, for all employees to look at what's best for you in your situation or your particular family.
Right, so if you're, if you're someone that's ill a lot, you probably aren't gonna want, yeah, okay, I got you.
Just, just in general, do, do you know for, do you know how the networks are, are different or are they same pretty much?
They're pretty much the same network. So many of the folks, even when we had this year, was the first year of, of the HMO, we had a, a tool where people could look up their doctors, and for most people, they were, they were in both networks.
So there really isn't. I mean, why, why wouldn't you go? It's almost a no-brainer.
I think part of our responsibility as an organization is to provide continued educational opportunities for staff, because that, that healthcare piece becomes particularly personal and, and you want to really drill into and, and look at those documents. Who are the doctors? What's available? What are the copays? And the more we can begin to talk about this and share potential draft rate structures earlier, it allows our employees to make a more informed choice.
And actually, those percent increases aren't bad. They're not great, but they're not bad. People get a lot more flex than, than you guys.
Right.
Um, okay.
Good to know.
Other-
I know. If I got those, I'd be happy.
We wanna go around and sort of, first of all, are there more clarifying questions? Because this is, if this is not your, your world, this is complicated, um, so there are questions, please let me know, and otherwise, I think we might wanna give, um, Dr. Herron a sense again of where we're, where we're sort of falling.
You mean by like that thirty seventy split stuff or?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm going to ask one more clarifying question. So we, we are, and I think, I know this is probably what Mrs. Donner was just asking, but, so we are essentially saying we will, we will do a seventy thirty split and we will do a seventy thirty split of a three point four percent increase.
Correct.
Okay. Even though for some people, it's going, for some, it's going up nine percent. Okay.
Yes.
And is that the worst case scenario for someone who has something that's going up a lot more than the three point four percent? Is that worst case scenario reflected on this chart?
Yes. We, okay, that's, we call that the, the misordigo chart.
This chart?
Yeah.
I might have asked for this last year, um, so.
Part of the rationale, I think, in, in looking- Part of the rationale, I think, in in looking at the su- the support staff, so we're talking about grade six there. Uh, if you think back to the earlier conversation, we are proposing specific targeted ra- um salary adjustment for grade four. Uh, grade five doesn't necessarily exist. So what we're showing you is potentially the lowest, what what would become the the lowest increase of salary at the three percent. And then if that employee was also utilizing the two fifty family care, what he or she would see as as a decrease in their annual income.
Okay. And then if if for whatever reason, we weren't able to do a three percent raise, it it would be all the.
The dark blue line gets closer to the red line. If not below it.
If not below it. So, okay.
So philosophically, we we talked about, do we put it into teacher salary or into health insurance? And and I think the board was leaning towards three percent raise, you know, for everyone because um, every employee gets that, whereas not every employee takes our health insurance. One reason. Uh, and secondly, because three percent for everyone, but then when you come to healthcare or health insurance, there is the element of choice. And and each family needs to choose what's what's best for them. And some of it is going to cost more than others. This is a a horrible decision to make. Because we want to do everything for every single employee. We don't want it to cost more. We don't want it to go up by nine percent this year. Um, and there's things we we can't control, but it drives us to some very difficult decisions about where we, what we want to prioritize um as as a as a team.
Can I ask one more question? So at the fair, um hypothetically, do some people come and are there people they can sit down with and talk to and say, um, my husband's going to need two knee replacement surgeries or whatever? And um which which one? I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I was not trying to promote your business. I just know two people that had knee replacement surgeries in the division.
Yeah, no, definitely. That's the intent of that. And right now, I mean, it's in the plan design, but it is very technical. So to be able to talk in layman's terms to somebody.
That would be there?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that happening at schools or do people have to come to?
We haven't done it yet. So I think that that's what our plan is to do. Yes, ma'am.
Because if you want everybody to be educated, everybody might not go there, but everybody could possibly do it at the school. But also, um, it just left my mind. There was something else about. Oh, oh, Centerra, would you have people, since there was a small number, that have tried the Centerra? They could give testimonials like to say, this is what benefited us. We didn't think that we would. And will that happen to help at that fair?
Well, I I think definitely that we can have that and have and the folks from Centerra there to give the those technical answers too. But I think anecdotally, it's been very, very positive.
Okay. But it would be nice to hear from people that are already in it to talk about it if they would. Okay, that's all I have.
Ms. Chen, I have a clarifying question. Um, I'm just looking at the slide that has a comparison of estimated employee monthly premiums. I'm just wondering, um, currently, what percentage of our employees? Do most of our employees choose the Centerra? Or do do most of them? I guess I'm asking because like the percentage would um, help me kind of get a gauge of whether this three point, basing the three point four percent on the Centerra, leaning on that more heavily than, let's say, the nine percent and budgeting based on three point four percent. Is that because most employees currently choose that? And so that's likely what will happen? And so therefore, that makes sense to budget on?
No.
I I think it's actually, it's actually different from that. Mr. Baker can give you the specific numbers on the two fifty and five hundred plan. I think that number is about eleven hundred employees.
Correct.
Right. So part part of our thought process and and really looking for a way to prioritize a salary enhancement for all employees vice the healthcare piece was to say the most economical way to prioritize salary is to base it on the three point four percent increase from Centerra. Thereby, providing our employees with three, actually four, choices for healthcare. Based on what he or she feels like they need for their family, recognizing that with each choice, there is a cost associated. Hope that answers your question. So so right now, just over a hundred folks are using the Centerra Plan.
About about two thousand, right? Two thousand employees we have?
Thirteen thirteen hundred. They currently take they take health insurance. But this is the first year that the Centerra Plan was offered.
The sixty-eight percent of our employees are utilizing or taking it, taking the healthcare.
I think Ms. Chen's question was about the percentage using Centerra. So comparing it to the overall number of people.
A hundred people, it's very small.
Small.
Okay, so so we're hoping that this it will increase significantly, right? Which would make the budget make sense.
I I think what, so each person is going to make that choice based on what they think is best for them. I I think what we're trying to say administratively is that there is an option for our employees who do not want to see a significant increase in their healthcare costs by moving towards the Centerra Plan based on the way the the rates are laid out right now. That that may cause more people to move from the two fifty and five hundred to Centerra. Financially, if it were my family, that would make most sense for me. But there are other factors that we can't necessarily fully know until the draft rate sheets are out and people start talking with their family about, well, does it make more sense perhaps for me to come onto your healthcare spouse or or partner? Because it it's a it's a better option for our family.
It's going to be come down to out-of-pocket pay, I believe.
So Ms. Chen, if I if I may, the 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 reason for basing our part on the three point four is so that we can show a budget adjustment of the one point two. So we're so we're saving that one point two million so we can lower. And and saying that the, any additional cost is is a choice.
Right.
Right.
So that's the. Wanted to, the the question was just to clarify. I just wanted to make sure that budget adjustment actually makes sense. You know, that's all.
And I and I think that's part of the discussion this evening. We went into the last two weeks to give options for reducing our ask of the localities. This is one way to do it. It doesn't mean it's the right way. Um, it and again, it depends on the on the boards, um, how much you are prepared to ask for. We don't have to make this adjustment. It gives a possible scenario um that we can move towards. And it would be just good to know your your thinking and and reflection, having got some of this information this evening.
So do we want to kind of go around the the table again real quick? Mr. Rifford, you want to give your thoughts?
I I think I'm I'm moving towards the adjustment at this point. Um, I I mean, I don't see. I I'm always hopeful of our funding partners. I think we should go for the the need-based budget. Um, and then I I would just encourage our employees to maybe check into the Centerra Plan for for, you know, I think that having those options and then maybe even, I think, on top of what Ms. Huntley said about uh like what doctors are available in in that plan, right? Because if there's not much overlap, maybe people seem to be able to see like their current doctors in that plan, right? That's what really kind of scares some people. Um, I me as a young person, like I got insurance for the first time here. You know, it's very daunting to do, but um I think that's that would really help me to kind of switch into my wife's plan, right, and do those type of things. So.
I think in in relation to that, about about my Madam Chair, the we are going to put out, we don't have final percentage. We don't have final, final, final numbers from our health insurance, but I believe we're working on draft price of each plan through every scenario to make it available so that folks can start looking at it now and 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 understand what this means for them. Dr. Kiefer, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And we're we're sharing the draft rates with you this evening, in essence, by way of the slide that Ms. Ewing talked through. We're we're going to attempt to make that as public as possible so people can begin to look at their own individual context or family context.
Mr. Hoseng, what are your thoughts listening to all this?
I think at this point, the the revised proposal would probably would be uh probably prudent. Um, getting a baseline for the employees, getting a baseline for for us as to what um we could possibly afford. And then it's up to the employees to determine which health plan they want to take. You know, if it's a more expensive one, that's on on the employee. Um, they've got that choice, but I think having us with a baseline is probably the best approach at this point.
Mrs. Huntley, what are your thoughts?
Um, I would say the same. Uh, I I like the idea of the fair. Um, and because with, again, if I have a lot of health issues, it would make sense to me. You have to make make it make sense to me. If I can help by going to Centerra, am I still going to get this coverage and not have a lot of out-of-pocket pay? Then yes, I'll do it. But if I don't see that that's going to happen, then I think we'll have a lot of people stick with the more expensive. So it's almost like I can't answer that question because I don't, I I I don't know why people take the, I mean, I know why some people take the higher. And it's it does come down to out-of-pocket and certain doctors and what you get. And so if we want to push the Centerra and the savings, we got to show how Centerra is comparable to the higher. That's all I'm saying.
And I don't know that we're pushing it. Mrs. Huntley, we're we're trying to give
Right, right.
Really good choices.
Right.
Um, our two fifty plan is is in a very rich, good plan, but you don't get that without paying for it, unfortunately.
Ms. Chen, did you want to make any additional comments?
Um, I I think as presented, the the estimate makes sense to me. So um and for the same reasons that have already been stated. So I don't have anything specific to add.
Dr. Corazos, do you have?
It makes sense to leverage this um healthcare sharing, this adjustment with the um the extra money requested for the salary. So it makes a, that makes a lot of sense. But but I, people must know that there is a difference in the premium because there is a difference in the service. So but that's far beyond topic of conversation at this place. And it's a very private discussion that they have amongst their family members. And they may chase to choose to stay with the more expensive one because that's what makes sense for them. But I think you've been very generous and very straightforward. You can't give them everybody, everything. But I think this is a very good start for them to say, you know, great, I got the payments covered. I'll do the rest on my own.
Right. Thank you.
It's foundational.
Right. And the one point two million is the equivalent of a one percent salary increase. We're pretty close to it.
Mrs. Donner, any thoughts? I, you know, I appreciate all the trade-offs are really hard because we want to make sure that our um, employees have the health coverage that they need so that they can be well, take care of their families and be able to, you know, serve our, serve the children in our division. Um, and I also think, you know, as the, as some of our funding partners, I know, watch these meetings as well. You know, to see that as a school division, we are working hard to figure out a way to continue to support the needs of those who work in the division and also be fiscally responsible in our asks. And so I support going, you know, this plan. And um, you know, really just demonstrating that we are trying to do the hard work of balancing both things of what our employees need and then also what is realistic from a budgeting perspective, given that we don't have insight into all the resources that we may get from the governor's budget. We have to move forward with something that is reasonable and that can be funded. Yeah, and I I echo what's what's been said. I think that for me, I mean, that as Mrs. Huntley said, it it feels impossible to sit here as one individual and feel like you're making critical decisions for for people that have a variety of of needs. Um, but I but as Mrs. Donner said, we we are trying to make it the the most fair in that the largest increase to someone's um out-of-pocket healthcare would would come with with an array of choices. And so for because of that, I feel like that's um that's the most fair you can can be is to give people choices. And and then if they choose something that is more expensive because that's what they need, then that's the choice. But um, but then, you know, hopefully putting more into the the salary increases to offset that as well. So that's the goal.
Thank you.
So beyond the adjustments to the proposed salary scale adjustments and healthcare cost share, senior leadership team has reviewed the expenditure increases to see where we can make adjustments to lower this potential request to our funding partners. This table shows expenditure adjustments that were previously shared with a proposed revision and the corresponding budget adjustment that would result. Several of the positions proposed for next year are currently being funded through the SRF three grant, which expires on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. We are adjusting the amounts for these positions so that September salaries and benefits will be paid from the grant. Then the operating fund would start funding the positions on October one. These positions include the special education teachers and aides, the site-based substitutes, and the War Hill security officer. The adjustment for these positions amounts to one hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred. Currently, the elementary trailer leases are also funded through the SRF three grant. This adjustment would keep those payments in the grant for July through September, two thousand twenty-four, and reduce the amount needed in the operating fund by sixty-five thousand. Originally, we were discussing eight positions for the restorative center. Currently, only four of those positions are filled. This reduction would delay the start of the reset program and the adjustment would amount to three hundred twenty-four thousand. This adjustment also funds the positions out of the grant through September, two thousand twenty-four. We have confirmed with James City County that we can utilize the fiscal year twenty-two year-end spending funds for safety and security to fund the match amount of the grants for the elementary security officers. This means that we would only need to fund a portion out of next year's operating fund if we do not receive the grant this year. This adjustment amounts to one hundred ninety-three thousand. We are applying for the grant again, but will not know until later this spring if we will be awarded a grant for next year. If we are, this could reduce our budget further. We were anticipating an increase in our New Horizons tuition of three hundred thirty-five thousand and have received a current estimate that will reduce this amount by one hundred eighty-three thousand. A new request that was not previously shared is an additional gifted resource teacher to expand our K two program. This is an additional cost of eighty thousand. And lastly, in previous discussions, we had reduced our reserve positions down to zero from the five we currently have in the budget. We now are proposing that we reduce by three, so two will remain in the budget to be able to address staffing needs next year. All of these adjustments will reduce our expenditure increases by six hundred sixty thousand. And here you will see a breakdown of our original expenditure increases shared last month at our budget work sessions and a new summary reflecting the adjustments that we've presented this evening as compared to our state revenue increase. Given the minimal increase in state revenue, we have worked to reduce the amount of expenditure increases to focus on providing a three percent salary increase to staff and to begin to make scale adjustments as part of a multi-year plan in order to be competitive in today's job market. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately one hundred twelve thousand to our revised expenditure adjustments, which amounts to seven point nine million, the total shortfall amounts to approximately seven point eight million, which would become our request to our funding partners. I had previously shared that the average increase over the past ten years from the localities that we've received is around two and a half percent. If we assume a two and a half percent increase or two point five million from the localities, then the additional funds we would need to request would be five point two million. At this point, we do not know what our final state funding will be. We hope that there will be additional state funds that would reduce the request to our funding partners. And we'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Hoseng had a question.
On the slide, um, recommended expenditure adjustments with the New Horizons tuition, is that just a decrease in the number of students that are going to New Horizons? Is that a decrease of whether we're being charged?
We'd actually put in a placeholder number and they have given us a new estimate based on a two to three percent raise for staff. And so overall, they're estimating that the cost will come down. It, we always estimate a number of students. We're not estimating a lower number of students at this time. This is just an increase to the normal budget.
So we just estimated?
We just did. We did fifteen percent as a. We just did, we did fifteen percent as a early estimate until we got a more revised estimate from New Horizons.
Mrs. Hundley?
Okay, so for the restorative center positions, is that because we have less students? Or, um, it's gone from eight to four? Is that four? Does that, is that a teacher, teacher assistant, principal and counselor, or, um, is it, it's just not widely utilized? How, how can we?
So, Mrs. Hundley, originally, there were two aspects of the restorative center. And, and I'm probably gonna ask Dr. Bryant to maybe talk about them. And we've managed to get up one and running this year with Grant, with Ester Grant's funds. The second one hasn't started. When we were talking to the board about potential expenditure adjustments, uh, there was a, a feeling that maybe we should delay the start of the second part of it until the middle of next year and not ask for additional funds in the budget for eight members. Just ask for the four that's actually running right now. Dr. Bryant, you wanna explain the two pieces and then the board will understand what we're not, what we're delaying because of funding.
Yep, so the delay of the reset program is for students who are receiving short-term suspensions and providing them, um, supports as they're waiting or serving their suspension. And so that is for students in that, that temporary short-term aspect. That is yet to be open yet due to trying to fill the need. As we looked at this potential revision, we think about students who are receiving the short-term suspensions that may not have gone into the reset program. They could be great candidates for the refocus program, which is currently up and running, which is that six to nine week placement. So some of the conversations we've had is to continue to offer non-traditional opportunities. If there are students who might have qualified for the reset program, is it something that we're monitoring and determining if they're good candidates for the refocus program? Um, once the reset program is up and running, when we have the staff there, uh, we can offer not only the refocus for the long-term placements and also that short-term support as well.
Okay, so who are, what are the four positions?
So it's the behavior specialist, that'd be their two teacher assistants and a teacher position.
Okay, thank you.
And not doing this does have implications, because part of the, the purpose of the second piece is if someone's, a student's in a long, a short-term suspension and we put them into a program, they're still considered present.
Correct, so they're, they're serving their suspension, but there does not count towards any type of absenteeism for them.
And so what there is, we will lose out on that a little bit. But again, it's all looking at the big picture and trying to do things gradually as we feel we can do that.
Other questions? Board members, no? Oh, Mr. Riffle?
Sorry, I was doing some quick math. So I say, um, good job team on finding, um, over five times more than the governor gave us in our budget, um, in the calculations. I think it's, uh, I think it's just kind of the point of the work. I also like finding like estimates that we kind of have been adjusted, right? It's, it's important. Um, it's good to show that we are actively looking for our funding partners, so we can kind of point to things that we thought would cost more and that aren't. Um, but yeah, thank you, staff. It's, it's important work that's presenting to us.
I could pass that thanks on to the staff and around the, the outside of the room. We've worked diligently on, on all of these, especially the, the, the H R team and over healthcare.
Yeah, that's a, that's a heavy lift, so thank you so much. Stewing, Mr. Baker. Now we will move on to reviewing, um, some policies. Point zero one, reviewing revisions to policy G A A staff time schedules. Dr. Keever?
Good evening. Let me get my, let me get my paper straight, excuse me, I'm sorry. First policy we would like to review this evening with you is policy G A A staff time schedules. This policy was last reviewed and updated in October of twenty eighteen. There are several, um, specific changes I want to call to your attention. And Madam Chair, I think it's probably also appropriate to talk about G D B B at the same time. Uh, that's a policy that we are recommending be retired or revised. Uh, and the language from the overtime pay and holiday pay policy get incorporated into the staff time schedule policy, G A A. So, and I'm, for ease of navigation in this conversation, I am referring to the line-numbered copy that's available for you in board docs. I think it just makes it easier for us to have a conversation if you've got a question about a, a specific line. Um, we've added language administratively and through conversation with the policy review committee on lines seventeen through twenty-two, uh, specifically detailing a particular work schedule time for, uh, different levels or grades of employees. We are also required organizationally to define the work week. Uh, and that work week definition is provided, uh, at the, the bottom of lines thirty-nine and forty. Uh, there is information that we took from the previous policy that I mentioned, G D B B, and added directly into this policy, G A A. That's really lines forty-two through sixty-eight and line seventy-six through eighty-three. We don't believe that there is any change in practice, uh, ac- across this policy. Happy to answer any questions, both about G A A and then the suggested revision of G D B B.
Are there any questions on this from board members? Doesn't, doesn't look like it. I don't wanna move too quickly, but, um, just, just to
This reflects like the V S B A kind of guidelines from just the understanding of everyone on the, the table here.
Yes, sir, it reflects the V S B A model policy. I, I think in general, we, we attempt to align our policies with the V S B A model policies. Those policies that the V S B A releases as model policies are in line with state code. Uh, so what you'll find here, and, and we've also had external attorney review this as well, but what we find here is it, is generally well-aligned with the S B A.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question, even though I understand I was on the committee? The, um, the added lines from seventeen to twenty-two, twenty-three, um, you're saying that's, that's not new in terms of practice, it's just new in terms of putting it into a policy, that this already happens?
That is correct, right? It is, it is now captured in the policy, but it is something that currently occurs.
The planning periods for elementary and the overtime for, um, middle and secondary teachers who teach more than the standard load?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions or objections, so we will move on past those two then.
Thank you. Uh, then let me move to evaluation of professional staff, which is agenda item seven zero three, policy G C N. This particular policy was last revised in September of twenty sixteen. The most salient changes are related to lines thirty-three through thirty-seven. There was a state code change related to evaluation requirements, including the evaluation of cul- cultural competency for teachers. So that those four lines there are in, in response to the code change.
Mr. Riffle?
Would you define cultural competency?
Excuse me?
Would you define cultural competency?
I, I think the best place to, um, kind of focus in on that is the Uniform Performance Standards that the state has released as a result of the code change incorporating cultural competency. And there are probably five or six indicators within that, uh, that are provided in that uniform guide. That uniform guide is what we ground our evaluation in. So it encompasses a number of different things. Uh, a- awareness and understanding of diversity and, and cultural awareness, the perspectives, things of that nature, how a teacher might go through that process in his or her classroom. Be happy to provide the uniform guide from V D O E for that purpose, sure.
If you can send that to us.
Absolutely.
And then, um, I, I don't, I know in policy committee, we did look up the code section that this is lifted from, and I don't remember which reference at the bottom it is, but, um, could you, do you recall?
I, I think the most appropriate one would, if you look on line fifty-seven, guidelines for uniform performance standards and evaluation criteria for principal, I'm sorry, for teachers. Uh, so line fifty-five, that specific level of guideline was derived from the code revision, which I believe is twenty-two, one seventy, but I can confirm that.
That's what I thought. I, I do know that we, we looked up that code section and those, it's lifted verbatim from code, so that's from the law, this, that language.
It is, it is line for line from Virginia code.
Right.
But I, w- we will definitely share the uniform standards as released.
Thank you. I'm looking around. Any other questions pertaining to this one? Um, okay, moving on to seven point zero four, review revisions to policy G D N, evaluation of support staff.
Very minor changes in this particular one, Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, one would be a cross-reference, actually two cross-reference changes. Uh, we are revising or updating C B G, which is evaluation of superintendent, and C D G, which is now term support staff probationary period versus probation.
Okay, so just, um, just changing, updating what the, what the other cross-references are called. Not seeing any questions, so we will move on to seven point zero five, revisions to policy I H B class size.
This policy was adopted in nineteen seventy-four and last revised in two thousand and one. Uh, our revisions that we're bringing forward are to align with the V S B A model policy around class size, which is also, uh, related to some code requirements that are currently in place. So you'll note, uh, lines six through nine are being stricken. Um, and we are also deleting lines fifty through fifty-one, adding lines ten through forty-one. This language that we're adding does come directly from Virginia code in terms of requirements for class size.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hoseng?
Do you know why, um, I guess it's line twenty-three, why English classes, um, pulled out from that or specific for that?
I, I do believe that it is related to Engli- English Language Arts, uh, code requirement. So that, that is specifically named within state code.
I could follow up on that.
Yes, please.
Um, this is, it also references the, the, the literacy act talks about this. I think it actually defines why they do this, um, for the code change. I, I just remember reading the bill a couple of years back and they, they furthermore explain this section for, for the reasons of like improving that piece of legislation to like more target Eng- English classes, so.
Thank you, Mr.
Across the Commonwealth, not just us, you know, this is.
Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions? No? Okay, let's move on. We will go to seven point zero six, review revisions to policy J N, student fees, fines and charges.
This was last revised in July of twenty fifteen. Uh, we have made some formatting updates for consistency with other policies. Lines, uh, twenty-seven through twenty-eight specifically. Uh, we've deleted the sentence procedures for requesting a waiver for the year are found in policy J and R. The wafer forms are located, et cetera. Uh, we, we are attempting to make things more seamless for families in terms of understanding what the fees are and how to access the fee waivers. So the language in the policy has been revised to make that a more seamless opportunity for families. There was some, uh, question or discussion around, uh, behind the wheel and driver's ed and, and the fee associated with that. Um, there's a cross-reference to I G A J, which is driver education. Happy to answer questions about the difference between driver's ed and behind the wheel if necessary. But I, I, I think the changes are fairly self-explanatory.
So, right, the question we had in policy committee was that, that driver's ed is becoming, um, part of P E and it's mandatory for everybody, right? But that's not the part that
Right, but behind the wheel is a, is an option through a driver's ed curriculum. Behind the wheel, you would pay for additionally. You may wish to do that through the school division. You may wish to take behind the wheel through an outside service provider.
All right, thank you. Any, yes, I was getting there.
I actually forgot, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Hoseng? We'll let Mr. Riffle regroup.
Uh, I'm looking at the, uh, appendix and talking about the fees and just curious regarding the parking fees for the students. Um, and wondering if, why that is. One of the things that I'm thinking of is if, if we allow, if we don't have parking fees, that may allow or have more students drive, which may alleviate some of our bus, busing issues. Um, so that may have a, a better effect for the school division by not having the fees.
What I, what I might recommend, uh, to- tonight is not necessarily a discussion about the fee listing. You, you actually, as a board member, have an opportunity, I think it's in the spring of the year, to review the fees as brought forward by administration. Uh, we make a recommendation, you approve the fees. So this is really about the language of the policy and then we will come back to you later this year. I think it's May or June and with a fee schedule. And we could have a detailed conversation about fees for parking or fees for this versus fees for that.
Does that satisfy your question for now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Mr. Riffle?
My question is about, is paper fee still a thing? Like, do we still offer that as an option? Is, is it only online? Cuz it's, it says, and what we're changing here, it's moving towards an online version of the program of studies as directed. So it's no longer like, was paper a thing we did or?
You're talking about the publication of the program of studies? We we, we publish, we publish a PDF file of the program of studies. We do print a, a small number. Uh, our, our goal is to be able to help people access that online, but certainly those that aren't able to. There is a, a paper copy available, some number per building, and then some also available here in central office. Did that answer your question?
It does. I just, I just know that people still file taxes by mail, so I mean, this is just something I think we wanna leave an option for families that feel more comfortable with paper and, you know.
Like me.
I don't know, I'm just suggesting. I just wanna know if we still do and that's, that's all.
And we do, we do for that reason.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the last one, seven point zero seven, review revisions to policy K F B, administration of surveys and questionnaires.
This was adopted in July of two thousand and six. This policy revision actually brings with it a recoding. Not being humorous, but we are recommending this be re-coded as J O B. Uh, so right now, it's currently in the K section. We believe it ought to move to the J section. And based on coding within the V S B A model policy, we're recommending that it have the same coding there. So i- if approved by the board, this would be moved from section K to section J and be renamed J O B, administration of surveys and questionnaires. There are, there's a specific add to this recommended revision and it's section C beginning on line thirty-one, uh, through line fifty. The, um, additional additions are sixty-one through sixty-three. I recognize that there may be a question about what, what might be an annual survey or what are the different types of surveys that are involved. And I, I believe earlier today, you received some information around a, a response to that question. So for knowledge, uh, probably the most, the most common example of an annual survey that we provide is on, on student safety and climate through the D C J S. That is an annual survey that switches back and forth years between being administered to middle school students and administered to high school students. Uh, this year, I believe, is a high school administration for that, that survey. Um, next year would be a middle school administration. Another example of a survey that is given with less frequency is the Virginia Health Survey. That is, that happens, uh, I don't wanna say sporadically, but with less consistency. Uh, school and the school division is picked randomly to administer that survey. And that this year, I believe, that Virginia Health Survey is being administered to James Blair Middle School to a particular grade level. There are some examples of potential survey items within that response to the school board question.
All right, questions, Mr. Hussein?
I, a couple of questions regarding the new paragraph C.
Sure.
And the, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have the, pulled up with the, the line numbers. But in the first part, it says, uh, that the parent or board notify the parent concerning the administration of such questionnaire or survey and writing at least thirty days prior to its administration. Is there any way we can put it that it's, it is thirty days prior to the adminis- to the administration? And what I'm getting at is there's a lot of times that on the first week of school, parents will receive a lot of documents. One of them may say, your child may receive a questionnaire during the school year. Um, and then it comes up in the second part of the school year and the parents aren't thinking about it at that timeframe. Is there a way we can give the parents thirty days notice before these questionnaires are sent out? And, and not just at the beginning of the school year. I mean, like, if we're going to do the questionnaire on April first, then March first, we're giving parents notice.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, instead of meeting the requirement by way of an annual notification, you're asking for the language of the policy to potentially be, um, more specific with respect to when that notification occurs.
Correct.
Is that right?
Thirty, thirty, basically thirty days prior to the survey being given to the student.
Let me, uh, uh, first of all, I would want to defer to the policy committee in terms of that conversation and, and preference. And then while I'm deferring, maybe Mr. Walker and or Dr. Worley can think about implications for that.
I can say that the two surveys mentioned, the D C J S survey, um, to high school students this year, parents did receive thirty day notification prior to the administration of that starting. Um, as well as the Virginia Youth Health Survey at James Blair Middle, parents also received a thirty day advance notification. And this was well beyond the start of the school year.
So it wasn't, it wasn't an annual notification that happened in August. This was.
Specific to that timeframe.
I'm not sure if that addresses the concern or request.
Well, I mean, that may be the policy that we had for these two surveys, but moving forward, I mean, I could s- potentially see the school system putting something out the first part of the school year and that, and then the survey not coming up until the second part or second half.
I would contend, I would contend, sir, though, that based on this wording and the, and the specific requirements of, of student health or potential risk level behaviors, I, I don't feel like we would release an annual notification in August and say, X Y C survey might, I, I, I think we are very intentional with that notification. So I, relative to the survey information that you felt like you saw in August, I, I can't speak to that because I'm not exactly sure what that looked like in terms of what you saw. But I think with the D C J S piece and the health survey, if we are administering the health survey in March, we're letting parents know thirty days in advance in February, if not the end of January, that that survey's occurring, not in August. Oh, by the way, you may see something in the second semester. So I think, I think we are particularly intentional, especially with respect to these particular criteria.
A little bit further into that paragraph on the, I guess, second page. It talks about the parent's right to review the questionnaire and then to exempt the parent's child from participating in the questionnaire or survey. Is it possible to change it as opposed to parents exempting out, that parents opt in?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm trying to get more parental involvement and that's, that's the way to do it, is having parents opt in where I, I'm sorry, there's going to be a lot of parents that aren't going to read the, the stuff that are sent home to the kid or from the kids, aren't going to read the emails. So to get the proper input, I think parents need to opt into these surveys, questionnaires.
Mrs. Donner?
I can appreciate the, the wanting for parental opt-in. And so I think I have a question around, one question about past history and one question about logistics. So whenever we've had conversations around parents opting in versus opt-out, the opt-out or the number of parents that for the, for whom these things are an actual issue where they actually want to opt out, I find that we have a pretty small percentage. And so what I'm thinking about logistically for an eleven thousand, eleven thousand kids, school district, which is, I don't know how many families that represents, but let's call that roughly five thousand families. The logistic, the logistics of making sure that they have opted in all of these places, I think is unduly burdensome. And I think it, it, when you think about it from an efficiency perspective, when we're talking about we don't have enough money and budget to do a whole bunch of things, then you are now adding to having to take administrative time to kind of chase down something where I don't, this is not to say that it is not important for certain parents for this to be. But I think for those parents who opting out is important, they are looking for it. And for the vast majority of parents, like it is a school division for eleven thousand kids. Friction is too much friction. It's too big for that. And I really think that we are, we have the discussions. We are providing notices. It's more than thirty days. Parents who really care about those things will be able to look for those things. I know that there are the Facebook groups and things where that information is kind of disseminated. So people are knowing what to look for, but I could just, I would not support an opt-in because it is way too burdensome from an administrative perspective.
Well, how many surveys are we talking about? A dozen, twenty?
Basically, there are two main surveys that we've mentioned tonight that, that are done, provided to us by another agency to administer to our students. Occasionally we have a smaller version of a survey, but it's very unusual that we survey students for anything at all.
We, we did one in this fall. You may recall as we're looking at, uh, our ability to kind of understand how, what, what students bring to the table in terms of, uh, the No Place For Hate program. There was a opt-out provision available for that. Uh, there were several, I don't say several, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but there were parents that opted their students out of that survey with a thirty day notification that was provided as well.
But I, I think the, the key piece here, there is a choice and we provide parents with that choice, which is opting out of something that's happening. And, and so as long as we have choice, I think that's a good place to be.
But I, I think the choice should be with the parent, again, the parents opting in because right now we're taking the easy way out. We're sending out saying, we're going to have a questionnaire or a survey in thirty days and we, I'm sorry, we are expecting parents not to respond. We are expecting parents not to read it. We are expecting parents not to do anything. And if we want more parental involvement, I don't think, I, there is no cost that's going to be great enough that we shouldn't have parents opting in for these, for these issues.
I think I would disagree with the, the opinion that we're expecting parents not to read it because when we did a survey recently, a lot of parents did opt out, the one that Dr. Kiefer referenced. Uh, I mean, we have constant contact at the school level with parents and I do believe they genuinely have a choice when they can opt out of something. Same, we do the same for family life curriculum and we offer that choice on every level as to what parents want for their children. And we, we, we communicate often, we communicate well. And, and I really do believe that parents do have a choice by, by opting out.
And, and I'm, without your respect, ma'am, you're, you're, you're expecting the parents to read the emails. You're expecting them to read the documents that are sent to them. And I can guarantee you, the vast majority are not. And so that's why I'm saying that we need to give the parents the, that right to opt in to any of these programs.
Yeah, but I think we're coming from different perspectives, which, which obviously we have a respect each other's perspective. But I would hope parents are reading the important information that we send home on a regular basis. I would hope parents are reading the family newsletter to understand what's going on. I would hope that families are responding to when we, something is, is significant. We send a text, we send an email, we send a, a communication. We don't just stop it at one piece of the puzzle. And I think we go over and beyond to make sure we're communicating well with our families and, and really feel that we do. And if parents are not reading, then I wouldn't really encourage them to do so. And I believe the majority of our families do read the information that we send, especially if it's specific to their student at a certain grade level for a specific reason. And very often we'll communicate as the division, but most often we'll communicate from the school. And that's when parents really do respond, when they see something coming from their individual school.
So moving on for now, uh, Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I'd just, uh, kind of go back to the previous thing in hand. My concern with an opt-in would be that we're kind of missing the general idea of a survey. Um, like when we, you know, even do elections, for example, like just saying to opt into election, that's what we do, like the amount of people who actually do it is crazy, you know, like it's not enough to be like the majority of your community spoke, like that's, just looking at statistics that like, that's a yearly thing that like the public is available to. Uh, as a local gov, like major and nut or whatever you want to call me, it's, it's important to like, we're, we miss the mark on like, who actually participates in some of these things, right? So if you don't, if there's an opt-in, it's like, there's your proof, like, that's something that happens every year and like, that's how I got on the board, right? Like, think about those things. It's, it's very interesting. When you ask for an opt-in and you don't think about like who's actually going to respond now, it's like, people who are opting in are going to be like, they have something to say. When I sometimes want to serve it, it's just like a baseline as well. Like, we want to have understanding, like how do generalistic people on the, you know, the middle of the bell curve feel about this? Just as much so want people to like have general concerns, right? And it, it's interesting, I don't know, it, it just doesn't, it's, I understand because I think maybe we kind of got off on the wrong foot by saying like, we kind of do this already. We give notification like, and I think maybe we're, Mr. Hussein is that is, we could codify this, right? We could do the next step and that's always like, I, I think it's a valid concern, but I just, I don't know, I, I'm a little lost like why, you know, the surveys aren't that big of a burden to fill out or do or, I, I don't get them as, I don't have kids in the system, like I get it, but I don't know, that's, I, I'm, I'm just kind of lost, like why is this, it's a contentious thing, like we do it, it, you kind of opt, you, you kind of have a choice, right? Like, I don't, it's not like we're forcing people to do the survey.
This is, this is, um, surveys administered to students.
Yeah.
And he's talking about, parents aren't choosing whether to do the survey or not. It's, it's stu- being administered to students in school. So that's, that's the difference. Um, Mrs. Donner?
I think we talk a lot about our children having personal responsibility and we're trying to teach them personal responsibility about knowing what their homework is, reading the things that the teachers send them, reading the emails. And I think that same, um, expectation should be given to the parents, right? You have a child who's in the school system. We're all busy. Many of us are working. We have the responsibility to pay attention to the emails and things that we get at work and we have the same personal responsibility to take care, to pay attention to the things that are sent to us. And, you know, as a parent with a child in the system, um, to what Dr. Heron mentioned, I get a text message, I get an email from the principal, I get an email from the teacher about what's going on in the classroom. I get an email from the division. I feel like there is, there's things posted up on our social media. There is an over-communication and it is, you know, my responsibility as a parent to read those things. And when I miss it, I missed it because I chose to do something else than to do that. And so I think the same expectation that we have for our children around their personal responsibility to take care and to read things, that's the same expectation that our, that adults should be ma- should be modeling and staying on top of these things to know if there's something that is concerned of the, of theirs, to be able to opt in and out because the division is is living up to their end of the bargain of providing the information and following what's in our policies.
And, and if I may add, so I, I, I don't know how many of you saw the answer to the S B Q. I haven't even fully been able to digest it because it's, um, was sent right before this meeting. Um, so we can, we can look at that over the next, next two weeks. I did ask the question because I think it's, it's important to have a sense of what we're talking about. It, it can sound like, oh, every other week there's going to be, my kid's going to be asked some personal question and I don't, I won't know what's happening. So I did ask, what is, you know, what are the known surveys that W J C C does every year or on any regular basis? And, um, and specifically what, you know, are, does our school division send out surveys that include the list of the eight federal exemptions? Because, um, those are topics that are potentially sensitive topics to some families. And so the answer is, um, here, it, it gives us a sense of what is done on a regular basis, which we're being told is about one to two. It's not, it's not happening frequently. And, um, there are sample questions included in this S B Q. I don't know if you had a chance, if you, you probably haven't yet because it really.
Have not.
It right before, so I would encourage you if you, to read through the answers to the S B Q and, you know, we're, we have time to before, for next meeting to, um, to discuss further. But, um, I did try to get a sense of like, what is the scope of these surveys? How often is it, what it, you know, so we can have a, everyone's picturing something slightly different when we discuss it. So, um, when you, whenever you get a chance to read through that and then, um, I, I do, you know, i- if, if there was not parental notification, that would be, um, that would be different. But I, but we, we are attempting to notify and make it very clear to parents and, and I am encouraged that you say these, you know, for those survey, is, are those the two that we're talking about that, that, that went out with thir- with thirty days?
That's correct, right. I, 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 I can't think of another division administered outside of the one that we did in the fall. Uh, when there was a thirty day notification, there were parents that, that opted out their student for the one in the fall. The D C G S survey, D C J S survey typically occurs in this current timeframe, if not into the March period on the, the safety and climate. There's a thirty day notification window there. It goes back and forth between levels. This year's high school, next year's middle school. And then it is not every year that the Virginia Health Survey is administered in a particular, that is correct.
And that's a state requirement for our division to administer it and send back to the state?
Correct. Through Virginia Department of Health and D D O E.
But parents can opt out of that as well.
They absolutely can.
I have a quick question, just to clarify.
Yes, Mr. Riffle.
Do we construct a survey like from the board? Like, this is, I, I guess like, I'm trying to just understand, like, I, I read through a little bit. It's, it's, and I heard what, um, Dr. Kiefer said. I just, I'm just like, why is this like, why are we talking about this so much longer than?
We have, we have not constructed a survey for students as an organization that we have actually created ourselves, the one.
Code language, like, we kind of need to do these things, right? Like, it's kind of the, for the wellness and health of our organization, right?
Well, and I think the key is that in all of this, there's a choice. We are offering a choice to parents for anything that comes out from the system and we are very careful and very sensitive to parents with different perspectives and want to really honor that and make sure they get the thirty day notification before we'll send anything out. And I think you have our assurances and policy that that's what we will actually do. Because it's important for every parent to have perspective and choice when it comes to anything like this in, in our system.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Riffle.
I just like to say, it's, this is a two thousand and four revision, like, we're really kicking a jump here. This is for twenty years of, you know, finally we're doing this, right? I think in this section, from my understanding, right? And so, I mean, it's a good move for our division to kind of get us into compliance here and to kind of move towards what other people in the state do and administer these surveys. So that's my only like last kind of bit. It's like, it makes sense for me. And I don't, I haven't heard any objections from the people of my constituency about this, even throughout like campaigning and all that type of stuff, so.
Okay, did you have one final comment and then we're going to move on?
Well, one other question on
Okay.
this, this policy. Um, it's that last sentence of section C. Um, no question or survey requesting that students provide sexual information shall be administered to any student in kindergarten through grade six. Uh, why is that not through grade twelve?
I believe it's state code related and I can confirm that for you.
I, I would appreciate that. I, I, the last time I checked, I don't think the state code is allowing any sexual information being requested by students.
Well, that, I think that they, the.
And even, I'm sorry, even if it is, I mean, I'll, I'll go out on a limb and say, let's buck the system on this issue and not follow state code because I think that's just ridiculous.
I, I would, I would not be in a position to concur with not following state code. That, that would need to be. And I'm not sure that you would want to do that relative to legal opinion, but let me, let me check on the, the grade six piece just to confirm.
And we're not saying, this doesn't imply that grades seven through twelve are surveyed on sexual behavior.
Correct. It is, it is specifically saying it cannot be correct.
Okay, um, Mrs. Donner, did you have something? No, okay. But yes, if, if.
I would be happy to.
Section of code for Mr. Hussein, that would be great. Uh, all right. Anything else? I don't. Uh, all right, anything else? I don't want to, I don't want to end it before we're done, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so so those policies will appear on a consent agenda, is that correct? Next time with the boards? With the board, oh, with the board's um permission. The proposal is to add those policies as they are to a consent agenda. Are there any objections?
Uh, I would object to uh that last policy, KFB, that we were discussing um until we get the, all the information back and the board has a chance to look at that.
Okay, we'll hold that as a separate item then.
True, absolutely.
Okay, um, Mrs. Donner?
I'm ready.
Oh, you're ready to move on, okay. All right, then we will move on to uh our one action item tonight, uh, approval of personnel actions.
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, do I have a second?
My second.
I'm going to give it to Mrs. Chen. Thank you both, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hosang.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Cavazos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Right, and here we are at Board Member Comments, um. Ms. Chen, would you like to begin?
Oh, I'm going first. Um, um, uh, I appreciated our discussion tonight. Um, I think that um this was a very productive working session, so um uh, and I just wanted to say that um I, I thank you for all the preparation that went into um preparing the agenda tonight and the presentations, especially the discussion um around, the presentation around the budget. Um, and I made a comment earlier based off of the slides that were a comparison of us being like fifth out of six and the percentage differences and stuff. Just want to reiterate that really at the heart of what we're doing is for the students and what is best for the students when it comes to that is to is for us to retain our teachers and our teachers with experience. So that is just like the bare minimum, I felt like in that slide from the original um, the original teacher pay scale adjustment compensation. That like that felt like the the minimal, so um just want to reemphasize that point that I made earlier. Um, and that was something that they told us at our new school board um orientation, which I appreciate that we had the opportunity and the support to go to that as a group. Um, is that at every school board meeting, we have to talk about the students. Um, so um just wanted to make sure I made that point.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavazos, do you have any?
I just basically wanted to say that I really appreciate the um monumental work that um folks have put together to give me some idea what the budget's all about. Thanks, everybody understands, I mean, it's a hundred and seventy-one million bucks, it's they're close too, so that's a lot of money, so it seems like they're good stewards of the money, if you will. Um, I think that's important, um, and I wanted to say that um I I believe it's for the time being, it's very well spent. And then I congratulate them for fully putting together a good project for me to to look at, thank you.
I will jump over to Mr. Riffle.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, I want to acknowledge that we had a good time at the, not a good time, it was, it was good to learn, I think.
It's a good time, too.
It was fun, it was enjoyable, um, I love being in Richmond for the most part. And which is kind of like my coast of the next thing, um, and the General Assembly is moving into its uh crossover period where House bills flip to the Senate, the Senate flips to the House um into the next week. So a lot of things that haven't been acted on will be acted on in the next couple of days, um, and then they go through its first, second, and third reading next week. Um, and then preceding that, the the following Sunday, I think it's the seventeenth or, oh, is it the eighteenth? Um, the House and Senate will produce their budgets and they'll be out publicly on Monday, the following day. Um, so I I think it's something to just highlight into um the public to kind of maybe look at those documents, they are quite long, they're usually around six hundred pages, um, because they are biennial budget, but they are something that really pertains to how we will do our jobs here, uh, when the rubber meets the road, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, Mr. Hosang?
Yes, um, just wanted to uh give a report for the, my first Board of Trustees meeting uh with New Horizons. Um, they are planning their budget at this timeframe too, so they're looking at us to figure out what we're going to do so we can assist them. And that was one of the questions I had to- tonight, just making sure uh how that budget was being looked at. Um, I wanted to ex- uh let you know that the Governor's School of Science and Technology was, and I want to read this so I make it, so I get it right, was wa- was number one in the nation for the most innovative partnerships. Um, and and one of the things that they've been doing is they they're partnering with Virginia Tech, they're partnering with William &amp; Mary. And they're partnering with William &amp; Mary to create, and I still don't understand how to do this, but their um air quality testing. So the students are coming up with their own testing apparatus and they're taking it around to different places in the area to test the air quality. What they are going to do next year is they're going to have a new class, which is the unmanned aircraft. It's a new course, um, and they're just going to give three high school credits total, um, but it's going to be eighteen college credits. And one of the things that they're partnering with William &amp; Mary is they're going to take these air quality testing units, try and put them on um these, on drones that they're, they'll create and send them up in the air and test the air quality. Um, so they are doing some great things, they gave us a tour of the new facility that they have there. Um, so I just encourage any um parent whose child has any interest um in learning about these these science um or learning any of the um other issues that they have uh at the New Horizons uh to please look into it because they're doing some great and outstanding things there. Um, I wanted to thank Ms. Donner, uh, because she sent out the flyer last month regarding seeing the Secretary of Education, the Virginia Secretary of Education come to speak and Ms. Donner, Ms. Chen and I went and and attended uh her speech. Um, I don't know if it's speech, it was a conversation
Yeah.
Um, that they had, um, and s- she just, there's just a couple of quick things that that she mentioned that I just wanted to put out. She said that um there's always a need for new data. Um, so she says, basically, don't be afraid of searching for new data. She said, use it as a flashlight as opposed to not a hammer, so use it to try and find new things that you're looking for. Um, and don't be afraid to try and uh obtain new data. Uh, she talked about her time in Japan and there are two issues, she said, one, she said, most of the time Japan like focused their students going into college or going further into college or be- better education and not to the um uh technical issues, um, or like woodworking and automotive and stuff. And she said, one of the things that we do great is we let our students make that choice and we give them all those options. And so she said, she thought we did a great job with that. Uh, she said, one of the things that they do better with, and I, and I think we've are changing it here, is they do a lot of mentorship programs over there where they have an older teacher with a younger teacher. And there's a mentorship there of helping that younger teacher, and so I think that we are doing that um here in um Williamsburg, James City County. Um, and so hopefully that will uh uh continue. And she also uh talked about the All-In Program and she said how great that program has been. And she wanted us to make sure that that is in all of our schools, um, to make sure that uh we are using that as um how she put, not as a last afterthought where they're doing it at the last second of the day, but incorporate that into the, into the school day. And so hopefully the teachers are doing that, hopefully the principals are allowing them to do that. And if there's any issues uh with that, hopefully they're reaching out to uh the administration to get that taken care of.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang, that's, that's great. Mrs. Hunley?
Yes, um, I want to say thank you to Ms. Aller for, I know she's been arranging our school visits, so for anyone out there there will be a school board person coming to a school near you. Um, and also, you know, we're all in the process of getting our schedules for sporting events and for fine arts events, and so we're super excited about that because we really get to see what kids are doing. Um, also, um, it is Board Appreciation Month and I know that um it, when I say that, you know, the focus is on us, but there's always the people that are around us that support us. And I wanted to personally just call each person's name and just thank them, um, because a lot of people might, viewing might not even know, but uh definitely have already thanked Ms. Aller and Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley and Mr. Snipes and Mr. Landers and Dr. Brown and, I'm going to look at it this way, um, I know your names, but it's easier to read. Um, uh
Baker.
Mr. Baker, Ms. Walls, Ms. Ewing, and Mr. Kiefer. And um, sh- there's shovels, you know, um, we dig through a lot. We dig deep and um we have heavy lifts. And sometimes chocolate helps us to get through the day, sometimes it doesn't, but you know, I don't think we should be afraid of this word cultural competency because when I look at our board, we, we are a culture. Our board is a culture, when we went to our retreat, we worked on how to be a competent board so that when people are watching us on TV, they see that we are a competent board. Nobody wants to see what we've seen, that I have seen, on some other boards around the state. And um it's all because we work together and we understand and what we don't understand, we have to learn. There were things we talked about in our retreat about how we communicate, that's part of culture, how do you communicate? What works, what doesn't work? And so um I'm super excited that we had that chance and we're still working on those things. And we're not going to bury anything with our shovels. We are going to dig deep and we're going to get it right and um um, I just appreciate everybody and Dr. Heron and my fellow board members. I know it's February and I just, you know, I love everybody, I love you, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I'm still going to love you twelve months out of the year. Um, and then lastly, uh, we did meet with the Williamsburg, I keep, there's so many foundations now, but which one?
Schools Foundation.
Yeah, the Schools Foundation, I'm on two other foundations, so, but, um, so I'm not giving out any secrets, but sometimes in this day, in this month, um, there're going to be a lot of happy uh staff who got their grants. So I think over thirty grants were submitted, about half of them were funded. It's going to be an exciting time to go around and and see happy smiles on kids' faces and teachers' faces to see the innovative things that um that these grants will provide for them. And hopefully, uh, depending on when the money comes in or how it works, we will get to also follow up and see what they did with their money, I think that's important. I know we get it in a brochure, it's, I don't want it in a brochure, I'm old, I want to go in and see it and work, and and work. So anyway, those are my comments, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, we're, we're very grateful that we have such a um a robust foundation working on our behalf and grateful to you for representing us there. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you, I uh appreciate we have such a spirited conversation on the board, which I think is exactly what a good board does. Uh, we talk, we have different opinions, we hear each other, um, and we do it in a way that's respectful and I just appreciate how we model that um for our students, um, and 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 for maybe other school boards in the I will say, you know, Mr. Snipes, I love my, oh, where is you, you're behind me this way. I love my uh school bus drivers, and so I wanted to share something that I saw the other day, so there was a school bus, it was one of our special needs buses and it was stopped. And um I saw this little girl, she was probably, it was elementary school, she looked like she was maybe a kindergartner, really small little girl. And I saw her getting on the bu- her mom's putting her, like getting her on the bus, and I saw the school bus driver clapping for her. And again, I don't know the the child situation, but the story I made up in my head was like that was an accomplishment for that little girl to be able to get on the bus by herself. Um, and to sit, and that joy that that school bus driver had to welcome that child and probably seeing the progress from September to February of this child. And so I just offer that as we are asking for school bus drivers, we talk about they are the first ones who see our children in the morning and greet them. And they are the last ones that see them at the end of the day. And they have such a profound impact and they are part of our children's education and their development because they are their cheerleaders, they sometimes hear the little chatter in the bus and know what's going on. They're the ones that can say like, hey, you don't seem yourself today, what's going on? And they have interactions, they are not just going stop to stop picking up children. They are really profoundly impacting their day and setting that tone and loving on our kids just as much as the teachers, the custodians, the cafeteria staff, so. Just if you're out there as, and are just even contemplating a way to help our children, please consider being a school bus driver.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Donner, for that advertisement. That was, that was a great story. Um, I got everybody, right? Okay. Uh, I won't, I won't uh take much more time, I I also appreciate all the tremendous amount of work that goes into just one meeting like this, especially the budget work and the the tremendous work that went into finding ways to save costs and to uh be creative and still offer choices, um, especially when it comes to healthcare. I I know I can say with confidence that I'd speak on behalf of my fellow board members when I say we truly want to make the very best decision possible um for all of the teachers and staff. And then as Mrs. Chen had said, which ultimately is the very best for our students, that is I know the the goal of every person sitting here, so um with that in mind, we will, we will continue to investigate and ask questions and um work through these very difficult issues, but I but I know that we are, we are working hard to make the best decision with the information that we have. So thank you to everyone who's supporting us in doing that, especially Dr. Heron and of course um all the staff, I won't, I won't run through their names because Mrs. Hunley already did, but um, so that's, uh, with that, I will move on to, uh, where are we? Oh, upcoming events. Special Education Advisory Committee will be on Thursday, the eighth at six thirty PM, right here in uh room three hundred of the annex. Policy Committee will meet again on February twenty first at eight thirty AM in room two oh three of the school board and central office. Student Advisory Committee also on two twenty one at three PM at Jamestown High School Media Center. Um, Consortium of State School Boards Association, oh, COSPA, our, our national conference. That's a lot of words, uh, we will all be, um, I think with, all of us, with one exception, will be attending that conference in Dallas, Texas from uh February twenty third through February twenty fifth. Um, so that's an annual um conference that school board associations from all across the country come to and um this is really a great time for us to have opportunity to network and meet a lot of different people and and then also get to know each other better, so we are looking forward to that. Um, upcoming meetings, we have closed session uh on February twentieth at five thirty PM here in room three hundred of the annex. Um, followed by a regular meeting on February twentieth at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And then in March, closed session on March fifth, starting at four PM here in room three hundred of the annex. And uh followed by um work session and action items with the public hearing on the proposed operating budget. Also March fifth, four thirty PM, um, also here in room three hundred of the annex. That is where we will all be. So uh with that, our agenda items are set for our next regular meeting on February twentieth. And yeah, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.